And I would acknowledge that it is June 2029. And about 10 degrees cooler than it was last night.
It's 25.
Yes, which makes it much more pleasant. But we will now begin our board time meeting special workshop at 5:00 PM. We did have a phone call from Director Pearson. And she is on the way getting to navigate through the new detour that I also got there. And that was not fun around, probably like the man has another they shut that off. And the backup is horrendous, but we'll go ahead and clear when she gets here. That being said, I'd like to make sure that we have an opportunity now to turn it over to our superintendent. And I know that because we've all been reek, and that's one of the things that those in the public may not know, but we're reek on this information. We do agenda reading these, we have been set up this weekly. So I'm really looking, really looking forward to actually work from the Kevin's. And so, thank you, Assistant Man of the study that up. We look forward to handing it to you. And Matthew will move to.
Thank you, President Dr. Schaefer and Board Directors. Tonight, the district has one report to add to the agenda, and that is an update on online January 23rd workshop, the board gave consensus to the district to begin looking at the possibility of an online school option. And Assistant Superintendent Kevin Ikada, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, took on that task, and he developed a team within the district to begin looking at different programs and options and what it might look like, ultimately what the resources may be to make sure that the board has the ability to make an educated decision as to whether or not they want to move forward. Assistant Superintendent Ikada, as well as Principal Harrison Prep, Kevin Rupick, who is also doing his superintendent internship this year, will be presenting this evening. And that being said, I will turn it over to both of the Kevins to give you their update on the status of their, of their task.
Thank you. Then Kevin's, I'm just going to jump in one more second. This wasn't even just a task. I remember that 23rd meeting, there was a high level of excitement about the possibility of this. And so, I really appreciated what I heard then is that if we're going to do this, you would want to do it to where this would be a premiere program, not is trying to make it work.
Yeah, it's not, not first, but best.
Yeah, it really was great. So we're very excited to hear from you folks tonight.
So thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board, Superintendent Banner, Deputy Superintendent Lauboff. It's a pleasure to be here. We have some highlights of where we're at at this process. Our goal is to give you an update on that and to make recommendations for further research on this. And again, assisting me in this presentation is Kevin Rupick, Principal Harrison Prep, and also one of the co-facilitators for our steering committee. So our steering committee started in February. We, we started reviewing student data, withdrawal data. We looked at virtual needs from that data, looked at ALE guidelines, state and, and federal guidelines that drive ALE type schools and programs. And then we started looking at different ALE programs. ALE is an acronym for Alternative Learning Experience Programs. They're basically programs that are not, not done in a regular classroom. When we examined these items, we considered various components. The first was, do we want a single district, single or multiple district type of program? The difference there is that in a multi-district online school, it allows anybody in the state or anyone outside our school district to apply. In a single district, basically the rule is that we cater to our Clover Park community with some, some flexibility in allowing outside applicants. We also looked at the concept of the levels. We wanted a program that, we consider a program that if you started in kindergarten, you can graduate in 12th grade. So those are some of the assumptions we made. But we know that the experiences are very different at the three levels, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, meaning there's much more parent involvement in a K5 program. And as you go up, there's, there's more autonomy and onus from the student. We obviously, obviously looked at OSBI federal guidelines and what the alternative learning guidelines are for staffing, finance, of which we want to get more deeper in this next year. And they also be, we are aware that we have to integrate this program with our current programs that we have with Grad Alliance and our credit retrieval. And lastly, we basically are looking at two programs that we may be using next year and seeing how that meets the needs of our students in Grad Alliance and possibly Pearson. In the, we also had other program considerations. We want a program that obviously met all the ALE alternative learning expectation rules and guidelines. We wanted a program that would support sped ELL, students of concern, highly capable students, CTE programs. We wanted a curriculum that had academic rigor and also supported social emotional support of our students. We also looking at credit acquisition, especially at the secondary level, and accreditation processes for each of the graduation levels needs to be looked at. And then obviously the online and in-person student life activities. We wanted a program that if you were online, you could still participate in, in our sports programs, our after-school activities, and, and, and anything that is involved in a normal day of school. With that, we're three, four online schools that, that we looked at initially, Pialp, Spokane and Federal Way. PL just started a multi-district program. Spokane has had a fairly extensive program that is a K-12 program that they were fairly sophisticated in what they're offering. And then Federal Way is one of the longstanding programs in the state over 20 years. Grad Alliance is a program that we currently use, and they also have an online program. We also analyzed neighboring school districts. They're all at different places, you know, in Bethel, I like, Kent, Federal Way, Olympia, Peninsula, Silicon, Pialp, Tacoma, and UP. So we'll, we'll want to continue to research what they're doing. In looking at some of the programs though, we'll look at them in terms of meeting all the kind of assumptions and criterions that I mentioned earlier that we want to, want to see. When we looked at the Federal Way program, it didn't really, it had a good online system, but tying it to school activities and sports and things wasn't there. So we'll keep learning from these districts and, and hopefully put together a great system. And that leads us to our considerations and comparisons, which Kevin will follow through with.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Ikada. Good evening, School Board Directors and Superintendent Banner. This has been a very layered process the last several months as we've been investigating and learning further about the options that we have to consider here. So what we're trying to communicate in this slide, the next two slides, as a matter of fact, is really if and how we would apply a single district program serving Clover Park School District students, and that's in that middle column, versus another way of offering an online learning program, which is contract services ALE with another provider, school district, and another online provider. And there's things that we have to consideration, consider. The staffing, the finances, the instruction, the curriculum platform. And so we've been getting into these layers where if it was with us in a Clover Park School District ALE online program, the employees would be direct Clover Park School District employees as opposed to contracted teachers and educators from outside of the school district. Financing, the students would still be our students in either model, but it's a matter of how the financing comes to us and/or then leaves through us as a pass-through if we were to do a contract service partnership. We've been having a lot of discourse regarding the instruction, the caliber instruction that we want for our students. We want the best for our students. So there's the in-person and online time requirements for instruction for either option that we choose. And so there's that connection piece that we've been weighing as well with student life and connection to the district. The curriculum, do we want it to be our district curriculum? Or do we want it to be a state-approved curriculum through another sourced provider? And then online platforms, there's a lot of variety of type of online platforms that we can choose from as if we make the progress towards programs such as this. There's the learning needs of all of our students in all of the grade levels. We want this program to serve all of our students and to any of our students that would choose such an online approach. That's, that's a critical value that committee has is that we want students and families that would elect a program such as this, that it provides the opportunity for a full experience of learning. There's a difference between the models with weekly and monthly reporting and time, face-to-face time, as well as online learning time for the various levels, K through 5, middle school and high school, as well as reporting differences. And that gets to the student experience, right? Students are still connected to Clover Park School District. But the reality is, is that some of our students, any online student, there's a less connection to the life experiences that are attached to brick and mortar schools when they are choosing to be an online learner. So there's some family and student choices that have to go into this decision-making as well. The monitoring of student learning, right? One of the critical functions of any educator. If we have a district online school, then there is more requirements and more time to be meeting with families and meeting with students to progress monitor their growth. If we contract service out, so to speak, there is less intensive need. And so all of these play into some of those earlier considerations around staffing and finance. Physical space for meeting and those weekly and/or monthly check-in meetings that are required, as well as the administrative compliance and oversight. There is just monitoring administratively of this program in either version that we were to pursue, if we were to pursue. So where we are going forward here in the next few steps is we need to get further family involvement in their wants, needs, desires. We've been focusing so far on the structural components that we would need in order to offer. And now we'd like to shift our, our next phase of work to getting more family voice into this, so we can see what they think they want and need for their students, what kind of level of, of instruction, what type of level of student life and experience that they want, and getting more information from them. Because we do know and recognize that the learning differences for K5 learners, they are much more hands-on, and parents in an online school need to be more involved with their student, whereas it's a difference when you're sending your student to a brick and mortar. And there's less involvement from the parent side of things and family side of things when you progress higher into the grade levels of an online school. So we are looking to create some surveys and some potential focus groups to elicit some more of that information that we would like to have as we gather this information. So right now, we are at June, having this board report to you. And over the summer, we'd like to develop some of these surveys and maybe start focusing some of our focus groups. And that's where we'd like to get deeper into this work into the fall, is really getting into what are those deeper layers of each of those layers that we have spoken to tonight? What would the financing, the staffing look like at a more tangible level for each of these types of options that we have? So that's the work that we would like to do with a proposal to you to make another report later this winter, as we've gathered further, more detailed information. So at this point, I believe this is the Superintendent Ikada and I would like to entertain any questions we are able.
I'll jump in, not see anybody else raising their hand at this point. One of the, first of all, my immediate response is thank you for being so comprehensive. And it's clear that even though it can take 10 minutes to show us what you've done, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work here. So thank you for that. My concerns from a community standpoint is one of the things I hear when we go to NSBA, even if it was that, is that the job market is looking for individuals who have soft skills. And so we might acknowledge that as being a portion of that is the SEL. But what they're really saying, and we've seen in the last three NSBAs, is that they are basically collaborative problem solvers, people who can connect, well, people who can know how to just show character, concern, empathy, but also be innovative and thought, you know, great thought partners. And so in an online school, how are you able to make sure that the SEL side and that the soft skill sides come certainly to set up a student for success versus, I mean, the academic side seems much more normative through an online format? But then when I hear you say in the report that you're asking in person, that's very exciting to me because I think that's really now where you could do the collaborative problem solving. So I wish you'd speak to that a little bit, how do you envision that perhaps, and whether or not you see those soft skills as important as an SBA says they are? And then the other comment I, I have from my vantage point is that I believe in our district. And so I, I love the fact that we're looking at it, could we do this through our district, through our curriculum, through our student success four pillars versus trying to contract and adopt? So those would be my comments.
You know, we, we did look at some, some programs and especially for the cell support, some programs have what they call a coach, academic coaches, where they meet with the kids on a weekly basis. Some have family involvement coordinators where they reach out to families and, and check in and make sure they have the computer, make sure they're logging on. And it's also, you know, the monitoring process of the building of, of having some monitor hours on the computer and checking in. And so, yeah, that's, we're definitely mindful, that's part of the whole system. And, you know, we learned this year from COVID that we could do science projects collaboratively online and, and things and activities online collaboratively. So when we look at curriculum and presentation of instructional areas, you know, can we incorporate group activities to be part of the, part of our research?
Would they have Kevin's, well, I say Kevin, it's funny because talking about you today. Would they have one day a week, so if you do it, the Clover Park School District, maybe they're meeting at Harrison Prep or Wake or Clover Park Store, Open Doors, whatever, if for I still to do that collaborative work, develop soft skills. I mean, we've, we've heard forever that the, one of the most difficult things for an individual to do is to do a group presentation, and yet that's part of the power of collaborative learning. And while that's an online virtual opportunity, there's also a different dynamic when you get to do it in person.
So I'm going to reach out again, nothing to say yet, but you know, there are, there are programs that they create what they call maker space rooms, where they have like experimental rooms that are available where kids can come in and do special projects and things like that. That could be possibly, you know, part of the plan, where they can come and do independent collaborative projects together in a small setting and leave and enter the school setting, you know, very fluently and evenly. So that could be one concept, definitely that I've seen a lot of international schools do those type of programs. And so it'll be definitely in our research, we'll research that area.
Melissa.
So I'm excited to, you know, go more in depth, in depth on the two different options. I would say this off the bat, I definitely, at this time, probably more interested in that us having more control. My only concern would be that, you know, if you just go based off the state standards, there's some things that possibly are more controversial that we maybe take one approach to, and then if you have a, you know, a different group in charge of the curriculum, how different will that vary from ours? And maybe what kind of complaints or concerns we would get from parents at that time if we don't have some control over it? Well, I mean, of course, you pick the curriculum, but you don't have a lot of control past that point. So that would be, I guess, my main concern with outsourcing.
That is definitely a concern with us when we examine the programs. We have to make sure that they're aligned to the standards. And we have to, you know, really critically look at it. And, and that's when we will start to engage our other programs like teaching and learning, help us review these programs and see the viability of it. Because if it doesn't meet standards, if it doesn't, if it's not aligned to the standards, we definitely do not want to use that program.
Well, I think beyond that as well, if we were to advise contract services with another district provider or another online provider, we would want to make sure that their curriculum instruction values are matched to our Clover Park School District values and our four pillars and what we believe here in school and Clover Park School District. So I think that's an appropriate consideration for us.
Anthony, we'll just keep going around, that's okay, everybody weigh in. Thank you.
Yeah, great, great report, and I'm excited for online. I think it's definitely a great option, but one concern I do have is just the cheating and areas of possibilities where you could have a classmate that just took it last quarter, and maybe he, that individual is sitting right there guiding them on exactly what to do to take that easy leap to get that quick A plus. Any ideas on how we could stop that process?
Well, we, that is something we have to examine, the process of authentic, authentic work and doing your work, you know, and making sure that the parents aren't involved, you know. And so that will be, that will be part of checks. We'll have to look at how we assess the students, and it may be where we do some in-person assessments. So I don't have a good answer yet, but definitely someone will investigate.
There are online programs being used already in schools here in the district even where there are plagiarism, plagiarism checkers, where we can scan in student work and double check it to make sure that they are not plagiarizing. So there are tools out there that help with that part. There's also online programs for live assessments. One off the top of my head is called Respondus, and it is a live feed of you taking your assessment. So your instructor on the other side of the computer can monitor you and ensure that you are taking your own assessment. So there's various tools that we would be looking at in either model that we were, if we were to go, we would have to look at those protections, so to speak.
Excellent. Kevin and Kevin, can you guys, I know you guys are taking notes, I'm taking some as well. So with respect to Director Ballas' concern, I hear us talking about what we would do to, I guess, enforce, monitor, make sure these things don't happen from the perspective of, of monitoring and watching and checking. Let's make sure that as we dive into this, we're looking at the building of the culture where the student doesn't want to do that, and the student takes pride in their own work, right? Don't get me wrong, I was a teenager, I peaked every now and then. But let's, let's work at it from the, the positive presupposition perspective, as well as the monitoring and ensuring side of things, so that we kind of come back to those soft skills, which I, I remember when we were talking about President Schaefer at NSBA, and the exact quote that I heard was, this, the soft skills are the new hard skills, right? And so we want to build the, the lifelong learner with character who collaborates, right? And, and it shows leadership and takes pride so that, you know, again, we're building a culture of students that engage in the work in, in the right way, right? And, and you know, there's still going to be that young Ron Banner that might be peaking a little bit, we've got to make sure we monitor. But I think if we focus our energy into building the student that takes pride in their work, now we're talking about a generation of, of students in a program like this that we'll still have to look and make sure we monitor, but it shouldn't be the height of what we do. Does that make sense, guys?
It does, totally. And that's, that's our focus.
I'll add some of your comments. I'll add, Anthony, would you too? I don't want to.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, and I appreciate the work. I'm just going to put it out there that I was never a big advocate of, call it online learning or homeschooling because of fear, for me, of the social impact of not having the soft skills and, and isolation that teenager, and I really think that teenagers do need, you know, they're, they're pack animals and they're social animals, and I worry about that. I think that this year has been a real indicator, there's maybe people out there that thought that would be the way to go, and after this last year, truly, truly rethinking that. So I think people going into it have, have had a glimpse of what having their kid at home and doing this whole thing might look like. So as we move forward this fall, a couple of questions, as we move forward this fall, and then we're planning for this, going through this process, how will the online learning be really different from the virtual learning of most students who choose to stay home?
So are we talking about the, this fall's virtual learning?
People choose not to go back to school this fall, because I think, the surveys.
So, so currently, yeah, we have our latest survey, we have 173 students that currently would like to stay virtual next year. And the numbers are changing, but it's around 59 elementary, 52 middle school, and 62 with the high school, so fairly spread out. The, the current goal is that we would offer them a Grad Alliance opportunity for online learning. And the, the details of the Grad Alliance program would allow a student to complete the number of credits for the year, complete a full year of virtual learning. It is much different, though, than what we currently do. So it wouldn't be a hybrid model where they're learning in the class and then, and then working with that same teacher. They would have their own graduation alliance teacher, they would work their curriculum, and they would work independently outside of the school. But they would still have access to all our school programs, all our supports in, in the sense of clubs and activities. And we, in order to do that, there will be some monitoring support that we would, we would have to have it from a district level to help with the students in that process. We're still collecting numbers, on total numbers. We probably mid-August may have a final fairly set numbers on how many actually will want to pursue this, but currently, those are our numbers at this point.
For those students who do decide to stay on the online, and they want, and I do like the idea of participating in our programs, they must then, this is kind of real detail thing, but they must then go back to their actual neighborhood school versus, do they get the choice of where they go?
Yeah, well, so when they go, um, right now, if they choose to stay virtual, we'd like them to finish the year off virtual, but because of curriculum alignment, you know, if you did a half a semester and then came back second semester, the courses are be, will be difficult to align. But if they wanted to come back to school after a year, they could. That, that's totally open for them.
Let me jump in for a second, Carol's question, I think, and Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, if, when they are done with that, do they get to go to whatever school they want to?
No, it's more of like, let's say, I've, I've decided by two teenagers, second No, it's more of like, let's say, I've I've decided by two teenagers, secondary students, that they are going to be um online learning. And but they also, one wants to be a swimmer and one wants to be a dance team person or whatever. They must, I'm assuming it's like our variance thing. They must go to their homeschool versus school of choice.
Yes.
When, when the kids.
This answer is interesting too. So if I understand what you're saying, Kevin, if a student signs up and says, I want to do virtual this year and then they switch their mind, it's it's not an easy switch because it's
Roger that.
And it needs to go through that year that through their cycle, which will complement ours. But you can't just jump into it and say, okay, today I'm going to go to the school and be able to send assignment. You're not.
And we are um going to be very forthright and upfront with parents as they make this decision because to bounce back and forth could be a detriment to the child um in terms of continuity and consistency. And there will be some one-offs and things, you know, but we are saying ultimately that if you're choosing this, we're asking you to choose this for the year. Um so and Carol, the only thing I would add is that the virtual option for this fall is a significant upgrade from our reaction and and uh and response phase. So the recovery phase is a significant upgrade. But again, we will be offering all of, I'm going to use the word amenities that a student would get from their school. If they have a health uh condition that the nurse would normally take care of or support, they're going to be able to access the nurse. They should be able to access the counselor. They would be able to access the sports and clubs. Uh so we want to make sure that we're not um, that we're creating an atmosphere where we, we do get to that well-rounded child and provide them the needs that they 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 deserve.
Um on the administrative compliance oversight, um to do this, uh district, a high impact on CPSD staff, is that because you would have to have I don't even know if you'd say principals monitoring it, you'd have to have separate staff as opposed to, is that what that means?
I'll let Kevin answer that. I've been through this quite a few.
What is the high impact on CPSD staff look like?
So, excuse me, so it's a different type of impact. Um we would have uh different types of uh services that would support that, that student. Family involvement coordinator, uh potentially like an academic coach. We would have to determine based on the numbers, uh if we would have a assistant principal or principal level type of person managing that. Uh there are a lot of record keeping uh in terms of tracking times, uh because the way we track um engagement in the online is around hours online and that is very much of a high-intense tracking that uh because the billing cycle is every once a month. And so that would involve a a different type of a secretarial support and tracking in that. So when we align uh those different services, uh different from a normal school setting, we have to, we have to outline that and kind of determine which would be the most efficient way to the staff uh of virtual type of school.
This is, and then I think this is going to be quite a lot. A a student that stays in district wide, so do their state assessment scores stay separate as a, as the online learning program or do they get filtered back into what would be their school, their regular school?
That's actually a good question. I I I can uh research that. We do know that we'll probably, they will be us if they are our student that and they're going to graduate from Clover Clover Park, that test score would be with a student with us.
Um and the last thing, and I'm sorry for, anyway, I remember a few years ago, uh there was kind of, there was when, frankly, it's when Silicon opened up their Wawa for online learning. And there were quite a few students who started the program, didn't finish the program. So I think it's important that as we look for further ways to keep our kids in district, we need to continue to look for those services that need to be provided. So I want to keep our kids home.
Yes, agree.
In district, yes, yes. Not if we offer a program that's viable and.
That is our goal, keep our kids.
Paul, did you have any questions or comments or insights tonight?
I do have a few. Um I would like to go back to uh Ron's comment on the, on the, on the honor thing. I really appreciate that, having spent the last week at Gold Hill College. They have an honor system there. They don't have lockers and at the lunchroom and everything in different places. They have places where you can, you know, little cubbies. You can just put your computer in there, your phone in there. Uh they, they use a pros uh a program where you sign an honor statement and very similar to a military academy and that that seems to work very well for them. And uh so I I I appreciate you bringing that up. So yeah, it's a good call from my perspective. I I have a question for the Kevins. On slide two, you um you talk about withdrawal of debt. What, what, what is that and what does it mean?
On, oh, uh basically that looked at um our, our students that had left our district uh for different programs and so um, so withdrawn out of our district. So for example, uh you know, how many kids, we, we currently have a hundred sixty-eight kids in different virtual schools uh like Wawa and things like that, uh that are in our district but taking online school outside. So that's what that data uh looks like.
It's only, it's only a few then, a hundred and sixty-eight is what you're saying?
Currently, yeah, yes, at this point. Um and then if we added the you know, uh the hundred seventy-three that want virtual next year is that, you know, two, two forty-ish, two fifty-ish. Uh we do have four hundred and sixty-nine students that are in homeschool. And uh, you know, would they come back to a virtual type of school uh if we offered that? So again, that's why also we need to start to, um Kevin mentioned earlier, we need to investigate our s- our stakeholders and to see what they actually want and need. And that will also play into um how we uh create a program for them. Or if we actually do need it.
Okay, um I'll jump to the next question. I I may come back to that one, Kevin, so.
Yeah, yeah.
On slide three, you talked about Pearson. Um so I mean, then you just talked about there's others. So how many others are there? So Pearson is one of these online programs?
So right now, we're looking at uh for, for next year, if a student wanted to go virtual, we're, we're discussing with Pearson online uh program to possibly offer that to our elementary students. Uh so that's what, that, that's where we're at with that. Uh for Grad Alliance, which we're planning to offer, we're planning to offer that for six through twelve students um as a online option. And so um right now, we're, we're discussing with Pearson uh the K-five option for students that want to go virtual next year.
Grad Alliance doesn't go down to the lower grades?
No, they only go down to, down to six.
Great, okay. So that's why there's some difference.
Yes, yes.
So I, okay, so that answers my next question. I said, if we have Grad Alliance, why, why look somewhere else? Uh I mean, could, can't we just pick our Grad Alliance like we have now for, for the six through twelve? And build our online Clover Park program because essentially as we have.
So uh that is definitely, excuse me, something we're looking at uh this year. So as we run the Grad Alliance, excuse me, we'll look at the uh costs uh around that and uh and how that works, how the kids uh succeed in it and uh and um and uh flourish in that experience. So that will also be added to our uh report and study.
And I mean, this year, what, we had a hundred and fifty students?
Yeah, we had, oh, actually close to two hundred, but it's a different, uh it was a different program. It was a, you know, cr- uh re-engagement um is different than kids that just want to go to school, normal, just for a normal uh grade level. Um our re-engagement has done, uh made a world of difference in, in helping kids get back on track and and to realize their uh their future because we can, we got them to graduation. This year, we had over a hundred students graduate through our re-engagement program, open doors. But the other part of Gradula- Graduation Alliance is a actual virtual school uh where kids can get a full virtual uh day, uh full credits and uh be quarter like a regular online school.
So, okay, and and so is it still measured seat time like everybody else?
No, it's not, it's not seat time. It's run just like Grad Alliance where you have to measure uh your engagement. If you're not engaged, uh it's, you know, in in the normal school, we have what we call a twenty-eighty drop. If you don't come to school for twenty days, uh you know, we potentially would have to try, we, we try to re-engage you, but we could, you could be on a, in a, under a backup bill situation. In uh online learning, it's a three-month non-engagement, but it's tracked by your time on the computer, uh your meetings with the you know, academic coach and things like that. So it's a different way of tracking.
Your overall progression of learning is uh one of the key factors in that weekly and monthly reporting that goes into each student. Um and that's one of the reasons why we are considering and why Grad Alliance and the whole bunch of other online providers are are being considered and looked at by us and why we're going to look at more of them this fall. Because in this case, Grad Alliance is only six through twelve and we are looking at a comprehensive grades K through graduation type of program and what um companies and or school districts uh may be able to do that for us or do we want to do create that ourselves in-house. Uh so that's where we get back to that original question of single district versus multi-district and what provider and who the provider is.
And how about subject mastery for these programs so that you can have some flexibility? What, what, what thoughts are we giving there? Because I, I I'd never like to seat time. I know it's, it's a financial issue, but uh you know, I think, I think kids get bored and uh they know what's going on and then, but they still have to sit in there. That doesn't make sense to me. I think our state constitution talks about subject mastery. And I, and that's an area that certainly when you have uh the online program, you can jump to wherever you want to jump. I mean, provided you show the mastery in whatever the core curriculum.
So actually, uh yeah, uh the mastery concept is something, you know, we're all interested in. And uh, uh at some point, uh we'd have to look at our policies, uh district policies on mastery learning and see how we can apply that.
I think that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, that's interesting. That, you know, we've been looking at project-based learning. And that certainly gives us opportunities in that format, not to just be stuck to a specific schedule or basic schedule. And I think that regards to showing that people you can work with them as individuals and either that's what I, you know, or work with that person. So that's certainly one of the powers that we're trying to create with online work. One of the um components that still seems important to me is some element of in-person time, human connection time, SEL time. And I appreciate not being in a hurry to sign a contract with somebody or having a partner that can allow you to do what they do while we do what we do, get in-person time and some of these other activities. Because I, I agree to Carol's point, I think all human beings benefit from social engagement. And so even cafeteria times, there's something to be able to have them come together, just be students and create friendships and come later on different projects. So I, I hope, I hope we you know, at least consider in-person and tied to district activities. I'm really grateful to hear that you are looking that way. And I'm interested to see what the community says, if if that's important for them.
And and Paul, this is, um I I know you, through the years, you've talked about mat- seat time mastery and um through the years, I know you, you brought that up a lot. And I know that at the college level, that happens occasionally. I I kind of feel like maybe our open doors because that's credit retrieval and they're able to do that. It goes back to some of my thing. I personally am not, I am kind of opposed to a mastery at for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds because of maturation and, you know, they may get, I you know, I really challenge a kid getting bored if in fact they maybe aren't doing the work at the level or I, I think that that's too and I know that we have students that um say they're bored. Well, they're not really, they may not be soaring either. So it's kind of a concern to me. So before we, and I'm just wondering, is this a thing where we have to say, you know, I, and I might be the only one that's kind of against that because I do, I think kids need to be it's maturation thing truly, to me, I believe. So before they pursue that, do we need to see if that's a poison one? Or can we all just say, I want you to go check this out?
Well, Carol, I can just tell you that my oldest son okay, you know, took twenty-one credits per year at the, at the Air Force Academy. And, you know, if he knew stuff, they didn't force him to do anything. So what he had the ability to do is show mastery. And so he could look at the book and take the test and, and test out of it. So I, I, I just, I don't care what your age is, if you start pushing people into places where they already know the material then why do you have to go through? That's, that's like punishment, in my opinion.
But that's why I started by saying, I know that's really a common college thing. And I think of an eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old child person different than a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old person.
So this is, but this is what we as board, we're actually getting to do. We get to share our insights and our concern. We get to turn it over to the professionals. They get to review it and bring back recommendations to us there. And so I, I think it's a great dialogue. And we've heard both those elements. It will be very interesting if, when you as uh the educational team are able to report back to us. And then also, we're very interested when the community has to say about it as well. Those, so we, we get to look at again, each and every and all, and then we figure out what we can really do to fund the very vast uh opportunity of the world.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It, what I, what I would want this team to do is to absorb what they've just heard from the board, you know, critical elements of what your thinking is. And then, but not to bottle them into a particular space so that they can do a broad sweep of the considerations that are out there gathering the um feedback from the community. And then, as you just said, President Schaefer, kind of bringing that back to a funneled down uh recommendation. Uh but I think that we gained a lot of insight to that. I think Kevin, Kevin would agree with me. And I have notes and if they don't agree with me, I'm going to share my notes with them. Uh but uh I think we've gained a lot of information um that that we can use to help synthesize the next steps of this uh particular journey.
There's a good book out there called Doing Hard Things, written by the Harris Twins from down in Oregon. And they, and, and, and their premise of their book is that teenage, you know, that's a mistake. You know, you're either a child or an adult is what their premise is in their book. I, I personally support that position. And uh, you know, it's caused us all kinds of problems in our legal system because we have what we call the teenage years. You don't know what to do with them. You know, if they murder somebody, they're, well, they're really not a child, but they're really not an adult. The Harris Twins really do a good job in the Doing Hard Things book, talking about that. Uh they even go back to the founders. They said George Washington is a teenager without surveying land. And uh, you know, so those are things that have happened over history uh that are pretty amazing and I, I would suggest looking at that book is, is you go look at subject mastery and some of those things.
So what we know, and so we as a board are not asking you to do anything other than continue to investigate, resource, research, bring back. What you have heard is that each person here is excited about this opportunity. We, and we're looking forward to uh your recommendations and further insights of which we will be able to hear and give further direction uh to as well. Superintendent Bader, is there anything you need from this board to help?
No, I guess I would just solidify what I'm hearing is continue. Uh we will be looking to bring another report in the winter of twenty twenty-one. I think I saw that December is timeframe. Um and we'll bring you back up to speed as to where we're at at that time. Thank you.
Pass one question then and response what you're saying, Ron. So on this recommendation, we continue to start the investigation. So if they come back to us in January with that, do they have a So if they come back to us in January with that, do they have a time when in fact they would want to make a recommendation to us? And would this be for the 22, 23 school year?
I think it all, it all bears out as to how, what, what transpires as we move forward. And so we would then probably most likely in December, when we come back, we would present an additional timeline and that would be based on the progress of the team. So I hesitate to say, let's talk about this year or this date.
Okay.
Until we allow the team to mature through the process.
That's fair.
Well, it seems like you've got some things in place that you're going to be, you're going to get to experiment with over the next, from this point forward.
Yeah.
So you'll have some real in-district data.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate it. We looked at that as almost 45 minutes well spent, so thank you.
And that includes the superintendent's just.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We're now going to move to the bulk of what we were wanting to accomplish tonight. Though I will acknowledge to the board that there will be the executive session tonight as well where legal matters. So I, I'd like to share that with you, you know, stand out there as well. So sometimes that helps us to know how to pace our, our attack. As we get to the standard operating procedures, the standard operating procedures are very much like what we would say are the metrics or the measurements. And the way that we can monitor our progress, but they're not the culture. I really appreciated what was said earlier in this meeting. And Susan, I think you really spoke up as it was important to you. But it is not about not cheating, it's about wanting to know how to do things well. It's about wanting to learn these skills that you can be successful and I, not get a grade in the law, you know? And so there is a difference between having things that we want to monitor behavior versus shape character. And as we go through the SOPs, it's not about our monitoring our behavior. It's about shaping an amazing culture for the school district. The school district's culture comes from the boardroom and results in a belief system that actually touches the classroom, the student. And so as we go through our SOPs, which have been revised, I can remember, because I, I did the research just to find out that Paul and Walt Kelsey had done something like that all the way back to 2015. There was a revision then, and there's a later revision. And now we signed them and now we're getting ready to look at them again tonight. In relation, it was always set up in relation to our board self-evaluation. So for a couple of years, we would do a board self-evaluation, but we really didn't. And then we would sign the SOPs, but we didn't really tie things to those SOPs sometimes. And so tonight, remember that we just did a board evaluation. Think of that board evaluation as we go through these SOPs. And I talked with our vice president, Alyssa, and asked her, you know, let's go through it line by line. Let's go through it methodically, make sure that we really do believe it. And then look at ways that we are, are able to improve upon those things to really create an amazing culture. And I just want to tie it to what our overall goal was last year that I do not think we accomplished at the level that we may have wanted to. So a year ago, we were the school board of the year for our school districts in the state of Washington. And that's an amazing thing. It really is. And I would like to say to you that I believe we deserve that. I genuinely do. We, we did some amazing work. And it wasn't, and it wasn't a check-the-box activities. We didn't do it to win any accolades. We did it because we wanted to do something very significant for the whole of our school district. And, and so I'm very proud of us. Just, I've gotten some awards and things in my life that I'm really not that proud of. It was like, yeah, you know, that happened. But this one, I just want you to know, we really worked hard that year. We did some great things. When you look back at some of the stuff and some of those contributing factors to it, just the important distinctions with that, the school board of the year was tied to self, it was tied to our working ethic. And so that's, that was tremendous work. And it continues, those things continue to be important, significant. So our goal, we said, and I said it and asked it y'all to work on it with me, but I said, this is a year that we need to be great. Because it's COVID, it's going to be hard. We know if the, if our school district ever needed us to walk in greatness as a team, it was this last year. And I think we had some areas where we did not really connect with greatness. And, and so I just like to be truthful and honest and leave full disclosure, not so that we can blame, so that we could adjust and move to that high functioning, high performing board that does great things because our students need us to operate at that level. And I would suggest to you that Superintendent Banner and his cabinet or staff, and I'm sorry, I don't know what you call them.
We tend to call them council, but.
Council. So I'm wrong on two, you know, took my third one. So I can say confidently, the superintendent banner and his council are committed to greatness. And that they, they know how hard last year was. And he's, we've gotten the reports, think of the reports that we've gotten from us, WBC superintendent Brian Lava on where you recover, how exhausted, comprehensive that's going to be. And when I look at their plan and it's over two to three years, that's sobering to me. This, this is, this is all, you know, Paul talked about doing hard things. There's some hard things that we need to be ready to do. And so we as a board really do need to be at our best. And so, and be great. I believe the SOPs point to how well we're functioning in that. And sometimes I may not do something great, but at least I'm committed to it. I'm teachable, correctable, I'm moving towards it. And so there's a level of greatness in that. Because we're going to get there. We're going to be a, a team. And the other thing is, we all know, we, we say it, and I, I'm convinced we believe it. But we said this, and I hope we can finish it when I started it. Go fast, go alone, go far, go together. And so being a team can be hard because there's things that we want to do to move fast and to move quickly. But when you have to have the lens of equity and the lens of community and the lens of team, you got to see each and every, Kevin is looking at what labs. And so that does complicate it. And being a great team player is not always easy. And sometimes you're going to see, and it's in the SOPs, sometimes that means being a dissenting voice. Sometimes that means losing one for the team, so to speak, and still creating energy and hope and excitement for things. It's hard to be a good team player. And Paul, I looked at your, you have a plaque behind your virtual meeting and it says, one team, one mission. And I can't see the other stuff as it's, the fonts too, at all. But I, I want you to know, I, I believe that emphatically, my own heart. That, and that if you're going to be able to do something great, you've got to be a team. But even as a team, you've got to be one team and you've got to be one mission. And I hope everybody out there listening or, and I hope everybody in this room hears my heart right now when I say to you that even though I'm looking at an owl and that's whatever that little thing is, I'm looking at a student. And I believe that I want to be a part of the greatest union for students ever. They, they don't get to form their own union, remember? They don't get to, but they barely have a voice. We're trying to learn how to increase their votes, voice. But we are, we are their union. We are their representatives. We are the ones who help make decisions with their best interest in mind. And we've always got to come back to that. And I believe that if we're going to walk at any level of greatness, then that's our heart and our quote-unquote standard operating procedures rules will reinforce it. Therefore, I'm excited, I'm literally excited to go through this tonight. And I, I'm trusting that we're going to read each paragraph, go through it and have an opportunity to see how well we're matching up. So Alyssa, I'm trusting at this point, we, I noticed that we have our standard operating procedures just in the back, under miscellaneous. And I know friends, sometimes it's boring to go through the things, paragraph after paragraph. Our explanation tonight is that you go through this paragraph, my paragraph, and have that all. Thank you, Alyssa.
All right. Started on the first paragraph. Do you want to go by section or paragraph, I guess?
No, I think we go ahead and just, you know, and we do have, I asked to see if there was anybody participating or no. It's a participant. And so just like Superintendent Banner last night, did a job of framing things so people may not be able to see this stuff.
Yeah.
Let's just go ahead and we can share the reading unless we don't want to, something is on. I don't want to make you read the whole document.
Okay. As a group of elected officials, the Clovermont School District Board of Directors is primarily responsible for setting direction, establishing policy, and responding to the community in the area of governance. The superintendent, as chief executive officer, serves as the educational leader of the district and is responsible for the administration and implementation of board direction and policy. There's much more to discuss there.
But do you, do you feel great about that statement? And you know, for me, what a great face for our district. He's a, well, truthful and he's excited for sure.
Not in the morning.
But Ron, we, we believe that you are great and that you inspire greatness in others. We really do believe that. We appreciate that about you.
All right. Basic to this relationship is a clear understanding that the board and the superintendent constitute a team. Neither can operate effectively without thorough knowledge of and support for the other's role and a thorough understanding of the board's and superintendent's responsibilities. Since the line between policymaking and administration is often unclear, teamwork is essential to bridge any uncertainty. The board of directors and the superintendent must be willing to cooperate, keep personal differences from being, from blurring the issues, and share both credit and blame.
I think you need to add something to that paragraph. How do you measure success?
And so what we're doing tonight is just enjoying hearing our responses. We're not, this is not a night that we take after, you guys know that, it's a workshop. But that's, that's the kind of responses we love to hear and be interactive with. How do you measure success? And so we have the four pillars, my first thought. We have several different areas of measuring success. So I appreciate.
Well, I, I mean, so we can tell the community that you've got four pillars. That helps the community understand success. How well is their child doing? So how, how do we measure that? Then people measure, we talked, I mentioned it last night, and you even look at real estate agents. And when they start looking at districts, school districts where people want to live. So those are some numbers there. I'm not saying we use those numbers. I'm just saying there are things that people use to measure whether you've got a good district or a successful district. I don't want to say good or bad. Let's just, you know, how do we measure success? What are we going to tell people?
But we, but we've been very clear that the way we are measuring success is through our four pillars. So that, so if I said to your son, you said your son went to Air Force College or Academy, I wasn't sure. And was able to do 21 credits each time. Does that mean that that individual was very successful in college? From that standpoint, you know, the 21 credits, they graduated early. That should really be an element of success, which is experience and growth. There's so many layers to that. It'd be great to have a conversation, right? Success can be very subjective. It also conflicts with the need of markets and other things as far as living in it, the example you used, Paul. And again, I'm, I'm a little bit present because my mother owned a real estate franchise and was a real estate broker in the city of Houston. And so there's some background here, right? Sometimes people want to leave in Houston because they grew up in Houston. They think Houston's great no matter what, so they're worried they won't price it because they want their laws there. There's so many layers. And so it's, it's a wonderful thing to be able to invite a community here to understand where beliefs and our understandings around success, which is why it took us over here to develop the four pillars of success and rule them out incrementally as well. And so it really is subjective and difficult.
And I, I would just add that because my definition of success, I'm sure, is very different from other people's definition of success. Like I personally, you know, for my children, I really will care about test, test scores. That's important to me, seeing test scores. That, you know, going to college, for example, those things are very important to my husband and I. That's not the same for every family. I think for every child, you know, a family member who, their definition of success was not getting into colleges, you know, maybe going to a trade school or going into the military or, so it's hard. I feel like, I mean, obviously you want to have a measurement of success, but it is hard because everyone's definition of success can be so different. It's, I think, challenging.
I'll throw one out. How about reading? What grade level should everyone, you know, when they leave our district at some point in time, where, where are they on, on the reading scale?
I think everybody would agree that reading is important and that reading opens the door to success. And so I don't, you have to say, I haven't thrown that out. I think we've had that conversation. I think we have a lot of measurements in place. The paragraph here says this, that we're going to be a team around these conversations. And so as a team, when we decide on success, and so you're going to be a direct application. It might frustrate me personally that we spent a year on our own creating the four pillars of success and then incrementally rolling off the skill. And now you're saying to me this very day, we're the success. That's frustrating to me because there should be a lot of energy, effort, work that you did and you shared it and that we all did as a board to move that forward. And then when you say, okay, let me just throw this out, it's not, I don't want to just throw many things out. If there's reason to have specific meaningful conversation, let's do that. But we, we've done that and we did it as a team. And the team then, as a school board, puts all these resources and energies and efforts towards moving these initiatives forward. And I wouldn't want to inadvertently just say, well, how about this? As the team is, is moving a, a very important process forward that we as a board give leadership to do. So that's what, that's what this paragraph is all about, creating that type of a team that says it like this. And that's the power of it.
Well, but we're creating a team to do what?
The, you, you can read the first paragraph over, it's right there. And I invite you to, and see if you can pull out of it, Paul. When you read that paragraph, would you pull out of what you believe that says about team? Because you signed the SOPs, you're up to here, here. What does it mean to you to sign this? Would it be too aggressive?
Well, okay, I, I mean, just, just a minute ago, you, you looked at the owl, as you called it, and you said, that's a student. I don't see anything here about students. That's why I wanted something about success. So if you want to say, hey, we're, we're going to measure success by how to measure how well our students do the four pillars. Okay, that, that's a start. Then, then we have to make sure we explain that to our parents or the community and everyone understands that. I don't think that's clear, personally.
And it's going to be completely clear and you'll see it as we go forward that it, it is about being student-centered. And if you still feel like, and that it doesn't, because again, this is, how many years have you functioned with the SOPs? And you yourself edited. And so I'm happy to revisit that. But tonight we're just trying to apply them to see what they look like in creating a positive culture. And so I, I've certainly written your note off to the side about where the student success come in.
Great.
Principles for school board and superintendent relations. The school board's number one priority is to represent the educational needs of each child in the district. The following set of operating principles and behaviors, when appeared to by all, will create an open, communicative, and productive environment for a team approach to district management. Now, I think that that kind of talks about student right there. That sentence makes it very clear what our priority is.
As long as we know that the word principles here is P L E S, and that principal response is, it's not their responsibility, it's our principles. It's our heart.
And, and I'm gonna just add the fact that it says each child. And I really, every time I read either the mission statement or get a document about each child, I'm pleased because each child is an individual caring about each child. It's not the all, which some are gonna be better and some are gonna struggle. It's each child, wherever they are on their path. So I appreciate the district and the board being real specific about each child.
Anything else? Roles and responsibilities. Surprises to the board or the superintendent will be the exception, not the rule. There shouldn't be no surprises at a board meeting. Team members have agreed to ask the board president or the superintendent to place an item on the agenda instead of bringing it up unexpectedly at a meeting.
I think so.
Yeah.
It's bold because we have had some issues. And, and I appreciate this thing saying that there should be an exception, not a rule or whatever. No one's asking all of us to be perfect, but they're saying when you violate the structure, pretty.
Um, in reading this, it's like, what would, what would constitute a surprise? To me, when I come to a board meeting and we, after going through agenda and then having the weekend or three, four days to process that, to come to the meeting and have something put on, I, I struggle with that. And you all know I'm a processor and I need to think things out. I struggle with that because it definitely says, you know, not, not to do that. So maybe the conversation should be, maybe we need to question, what is a surprise, right? What, what length of a time does that need to come up to? I, I struggle with that. I think if you've got a, you've got a agenda meeting, and I think that they're very efficient and open and pretty comprehensive. So to have, come to a board meeting and ask for, I mean, I know we did that with the value, with the equity thing. Ask that be taken up, it put us in, I felt like it put us in a bad spot. And, and we, that was a surprise. That was a huge surprise for a huge issue last minute.
Yeah, and I would agree that maybe we should say what a surprise is, because for those of us who have full-time office jobs, you're not checking your email constantly. So if it's Monday morning at 10:00 AM, I'm checking my work email. I'm not checking my district email. And then maybe I see it on my way into the meeting and then I consider that a surprise because it wasn't even 24 hours. Or, you know, maybe we should play. It, it's a thought. And I agree with you.
I think it needs clear, I think it needs clarity as to, to that.
And so, yeah, are we still ready to sign this document as it is today? I just want to make sure we're aware of that. Those things could help. But we're meeting, I mean, and we're not signing it today, but we have board meetings coming up where we will sign it. So just think like that. If, if there's a strong enough thing, then it might be, it might warrant asking some revision. For me on the tie, it's, if you know your team, it's very similar to the naming of a school. There's sometimes we want some flexibility. Maybe that person really was a great person and, and they can still be alive or maybe even out there. Maybe they, we went through their amazing thing in our community, like the four heroes. And that, and so if you waited three years, you lose all that respect and love you could show and appreciation to the police force. And so I like flexibility. You know why we don't like flexibility? Because we don't trust team. We don't trust people who might make decisions, so we try to politicize it to keep them making bad decisions. And so for me, a surprise means we really didn't know what we could have done and should have done. And it may not, and certainly you did the day of or at the meeting. That's a surprise. The day of clearly a surprise. And as you read these, I'm assuming you've read these, and I might be wrong to have assumed them. But I've read them very thoroughly again for this meeting. There's things in there that talk about, you know, the way to make changes in design and stuff. And so it is an attempt.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry. Jumping up to the next bullet. And to me, that, that really is the reason why. That's the immediate matter. It can't, negative impression on individuals, boards of the district, when something comes to us and I haven't had time to think about it, or I haven't had the debate in the agenda of why or why not, or that someone's gonna be, someone's gonna be left out, someone's gonna, you know, either they're, they're gonna lose their, their, what they're trying to get through, or and that upward, not positive, moving forward motion or action is, is really difficult. And I don't think it behooves us, it makes us look like we're informed or we're prepared, or, you know, that's one thing that those agendas do. It helps us be that. And it's, I think we kind of look like a little egg on our face sometimes. And I, I, I think better of all of us than that.
Yeah, especially, I mean, sometimes it depends, you know, it's like the personal path, maybe the most recent one. And if you don't have enough time to think about it, your words can come out. We're all, you know, elected officials and you want to have time to process it and think about it and be respectful to other team members.
Well, the one that you're referring to with the that point issue, and then when I saw it, I got it from Paul and I didn't ask him to move it to the next, not to follow it, because he was agreeable to do that. I appreciate him of that. So we were able to move it back to the processes. What it makes me feel as well, kind of what we said here, is it makes me feel like a bad team. So we as a team agreed that we would do this equally plan a whole year out, working at schedules, meetings. He said it was gonna be hard, this, hard, because it was gonna be organic, it was gonna be a journey. And so the specificity that would grow within it as we grew in our understanding and then to say, I want to have a drought until after the election. Felt like bad team. Because he put a lot of effort and energy into that. This, it's on there because you asked to do it. But for me, I'm, it did not feel good to me.
It does feel like a bad team, essentially saying some voices don't matter at this moment in time. Well, I think that that's important to remember too, when this whole thing is about teamwork and how to go along. But, you know, saying, I don't think your voices matter at this moment. That doesn't make for any positive team relations.
Well, this city board is responsible for every decision, which probably tells the new city board is, is sworn in. So that really, to me, that wasn't an appropriate thing. It was kind of insulting to the city board. And I, I just think we need to be aware of that, that.
It, uh, you know, once we get towards the back of this all process, I've had questions. I've had questions which haven't been answered. So that's, you know, put yourself in my situation. If you had a question and, and it's not getting answered, what do you do about it? The other thing is, is, you know, um, we get sometimes accused of being a rubber stamp. Most of the work on this policy, from my perspective, has been done by staff, not by board. Because, you know what? I have not heard from each of you what your individual definition of equity is, nor inclusion, nor diversity. I've not heard that. We've not had that discussion here. And so we, we start pushing stuff through, and I don't know what you think. What are, what are you gonna say out in the community, Carol, when you talk to somebody about diversity? What are you gonna say? What's your definition? I'd like to know what that is. I'd like to know what that is. I have never heard that from you.
There is a definition of equity in the policy. And if you don't agree with this, then you can certainly mention that. But everyone doesn't necessarily have a different definition of equity. So I don't know how, saying, I haven't heard every person's individual definition. I, I don't make definitions. I look at what other, you know, intelligent people in the world have come up with and see what, if I agree with it or if I don't agree with it. I don't think that there's massive variations of the definition of equity. And we have a definition of equity in the policy.
And also, but we also, the, the heart of it is that we were moving to a draft statement around equity that was part of it. But that's a deflection of what we're really talking about. What we're talking about is no surprises. You said because you didn't get the answers you wanted. That it seemed fair to you, that you thought it was fair to, you showed the processes and surprises. Because you, maybe you felt like that's the last resort that you had, or you felt lost out and you didn't get the buy-in of what you wanted. What I'm suggesting is what this says right here. So we don't do that. We have processes in place to make sure that even if I don't get what I want, I'm able to move forward to be able to support the work of the team. And so go back to your plan, one team, one mission. If, I don't know, Paul, if I'm an Air Force pilot and they say, go fly there, and I think, well, I don't really want to. And I talk there and I don't want to go there. I still go there if that's what the team and the people all agreed upon and gave the fuel for, set the coordinates in and I apologize, I don't know, all the dynamics. But we don't get to, so then say, well, I didn't get heard well enough or whatever. That's one team, one mission. We go. And so I feel like sometimes when we've said one team, we're going this way, and I did, you know, Monday morning saying, I want to pull this whole thing until after elections, because it could all change. That did not seem to honor the processes that we're talking about. That's my point. You, later on, you said you want to have some other points you get to bring yours to. But please hear us say tonight that that's it too. Okay.
Now, I gotta say something. And usually it takes me a while. Paul, you just sat there and pointed at me and you said, you don't know my definition of diversity, you don't know my definition of, and you don't know my definition. I don't, I am not beholden to anybody if I don't want to share my definitions. And I'm hoping that I, my definitions of all of that are how I behave and how I react to people and how I participate as this group. Nobody has to demand from me what my definitions and my positions are. I don't owe anybody that. And I'm, it takes me, I'm kind of surprised that I'm reacting the way I am, but I'm a little offended. Yeah.
Well, Carol, I, I think we're elected by people in the community and they expect us to know what we're saying, what we stand for and our definition. I think they do, and we need to share with our people in the community what our definitions are.
Paul, if anybody in this community wants to ask me, that's fine.
Share with the community what our, we, we as one voice is. Not every single person's individual definition of equity. Like if I'm missing something, does, I, I don't, there is a dictionary. I don't make up my own definitions for every word. That would be bizarre.
Well, and, and personal positions. And I'm gonna go back to campaign, just because it's taking it off this a little bit. People call me and they want to know what my position on life is. What's my, am I, am I pro-life? Am I, am I pro-horse? You know what? That has nothing to do with my working and my involvement and my participation in this school district. Now, philosophically, it's a whole different thing, and I, I will usually have a conversation with someone. But there are certain things that, you know what, I may be elected, but that doesn't mean I have to lay myself out there in things that aren't relative. Now, equity, diversity, inclusion, poverty, those things are who we are. And I will share that information with the conversation, but, you know, um, like I said, Paul, I'm just, you know, I was a little offended. You pointed at me, told me you don't know it. And like I was holding something back from you. And I don't think I have. I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not, can we work it? Because just last night, we hit it again. So I get nervous when somebody says, you don't have a definition. Wouldn't you do? And when in the process, we set it up to build a more comprehensive one, of which we were willing to do a journey towards having a very regimented, very clear, sure team. There is the difference, there is the state, the oldest, there is the process. Draft, one goes to board draft, two goes to board draft, three. First reading, second reading, and the fact that we then say we don't have, we've never had any discussion. We've had a lot of discussions. So now, what happens is the community listening tonight, I think, oh, wow. They've never had any discussion based upon an accusation made by Paul, or the rest of us might say, no, we've talked about this for a long time and we're doing great work. But just to be clear for you and to the public, if you will go back to last night's meeting and you will go, it's called equity. And you have all tweets and you will go to the second. Then you have, you'll just write that. And so we can know, we can share that. We can also share the process that we're on. We can talk about our lens of equity, things that we even share this very night. And we are sharing those, and we owe that responsibility to the community to let them know that we've done this work, that we're doing this work, including now, as opposed to, we've never had a discussion. We say that quite frequently, and we have.
Okay, I, I, with, in this whole process, in this whole process, we've never been in the room where we just had, the five of us have a discussion. We've never done that.
I think, I think that the five of us have had, we've had three workshops, I'm aware of. So that's an opportunity for us to do it. And oh, by the way, part of the power of what you've been trying to create in having a good team is that it doesn't have to just be the five of us. So it, it's not just the five of us, it's the council, it's the student voice, it's the community that, it's all of that. But we have had workshops where the five of us could talk about anything and share anything we wanted on it. And then we even put into motion what we wanted an EBI person to do. We hired that. And so let's just make sure that we don't, that, you know, maybe you didn't get to talk about it as long as you wanted. I don't know, or the way that you want it. But let's be careful not to say we can never have conversations when we've had three, because now it makes us look like we have our, what we are doing. And that's, that's why I'm struggling.
Okay, well, I'm struggling too, pardon.
Yeah, that's fine.
I have this honest question. Are you struggling? Because we are having conversations, but maybe they're not going the way that you want them to. So then you kind of throw out the accusations that make us, no, I'm, I'm asking. It's a, I.
I mean, I, I asked questions last night of the director of equity or, you know, whatever his position is. He didn't give one specific example, not one specific example. So we're, we're trying to fix something where we did not get one specific example.
He, he did give examples. He did give examples.
Not for our district.
He did. Discipline was one of his examples, and he gave it for the Clover Park School District.
And, and where's that data?
He shared, he shared that they had the data, and I, I don't want to say incorrect in terms of my memory, but it seems like it was over maybe 12 years, but they liked that. And so this is what is strange to us, or to me. That you're gonna say in a public meeting, that the meeting last night that we were at, that there wasn't one example, and there really was. And so that's the disconnect. And it's a huge disconnect. And so it, it feels like an accusation and it makes us feel like like we're not doing what we say we're doing. And then it's hard to build teamwork on that. And the accusations, in this case, were not accurate. There was a very specific example. And then I, even when I heard it, because I felt like it was kind of plastic in the way it came across, that's my personal opinion. I even said, you know, even with our EOL, that's another place of equity that we have to work towards. So there were, so I gave an example as well. And then to say that I to say that there was not, and that there was not I don't know, it doesn't make sense.
And I think it, the, one of the things about equity is this fluid. That's the problem, and I think that that's why it's so politicized as well, because people, I, I like, you know, this is what it's gonna be, this is the end goal, and I'm, I'm not, that's the way my brain works. But that does not I mean, I'd say most people agree, that that doesn't apply specifically to equity, because it's a you learn new things, and you adapt, and you change, and you move forward, and, you know. I, it, it's just, and then you come and you say we didn't do all of these things, where I feel like I'm at the twilight zone, because we've had like all these meetings talking about it. I swear, it feels like every meeting, and then it almost seems, you know, political in a way of like, well, no, you're not doing this, and this is by usually after the election, that you're not doing your job. I'm just saying, that's the way that it comes across, where I'm like, well, I was at the meeting yesterday, everyone else was at the meeting yesterday. And it's not one person's voice that trumps everyone else's, it's a voice of three. So if three people agree, then that is the board's voice, that's how all boards work, the majority is the voice. So just things like when things don't go in certain directions, a lot of accusations are thrown out, and we don't look like a team at all, we look like we're like bitch out of water, flopping around, trying to find our way back to the equity.
It, it, our equity policy is still a draft, hasn't been done, hasn't been voted. We don't have three votes yet, at least. It must be already taking some action ahead of us.
No, three, or a majority voice, where we can demand questions kind of aggressively say things to, you know, staff members who we are not their boss. That it's supposed to be a board that comes together to put the directive, not a single individual, and that's what this whole thing is about. It's not a single individual telling someone in the district, you will do this, and you will answer to me. That is way below the line, and not at all what we're elected to do.
I don't, Anthony, you, uh, oh, are often a sage of silence, and we're not always very close with you. I wanna make sure that we weigh in here for you tonight, too.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I unfortunately hear a lot of miscommunication and a lot of anger. You know, that that comes. And I don't know exactly where that comes from, maybe uh, from the experiences or knowledge that you may have, Paul, but, uh, unfortunately, you know, a lot of the things that, that are brought up as arguments uh, are almost, it's, it's ve- it's very pinpointing and direct, you know, and it's not fair. Uh, just like what's happening right now, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to go through this. And it's great to have opinions, it's great to hear what, what you have to say too, just like any board member here. Um, but we have been working so hard on this, and, and trying to make this right, including our equity uh, presentation that was done last night, and in my opinion, was done very well. Um, it's about helping the community, it's about helping students and allowing them to break those barriers so that they can be successful. And that is huge, that is exactly what we need. We talk about graduation rates. Well, let's see those skyrocket, and the way that we can do that is by equity, is by inclusion, and is by looking at a diverse community that we do have from the military. I mean, that's one of our biggest challenges right there, is because of the military and the influences that we get, which is fantastic, it's not a negative. It's actually a positive, because that is allowing us to really display of what America is. We're a boiling pot of just a mix of cultures and, and beautiful dynamics, and that's what we need to really focus on here. And I think what we have set up for our SOPs is in the right direction. Now, we just need to come together as a group, as a board, and really see that. Because we are doing powerful things here to really create that road and gateway for success, and that's what, that's what we're trying to concentrate on. So please work with this, Paul, don't go against this. You're like in the riptide, and you're trying to swim into shore, but unfortunately, you're going further and further out. And, and, and when you get too far out, there's no turning back.
Well, I, I mean, that's, that's interesting, I hear what you have to say, Anthony. But I, let, let's just talk, we, we comments, there were some comments made last night that said, uh, you know, when we talked about critical race theory, that, uh, that our director had a good definition for that. That's what we said. Or, or somebody on here said it.
Explained it, not a definition.
Okay, explain.
Yeah.
The, the, the problem is, is if you get down to critical race theory, you know, you have to go back, you have to go back to the people that started that, and it was Dewey. He's basically the father of public education. And he, he got this stuff at John Hopkins University when he was a he had Woodrow Wilson, the president of the United States.
It's, it's all, it's point of order, it is not, Paul, about critical race theory, it's about team. And so you're wanting to further your belief system to where we understand you more because right now, we don't understand you well enough to go your way. And what we're saying is that we know the way that we believe we need to go. And the board last night heard the EDI explanation of critical race theory, that our school district is not doing that. If we were concerned about it, and needed to go study from Dewey, or from the individual who really started it at Harvard, whether we could argue about that forever, we could maybe. That's not the point. The point is that this group was saying, yes, let's move forward. And we were grateful that we're not teaching current race theory, but that we're teaching cultural responsiveness uh, to our students by having a heart of inclusion to each and every street. So we were all good with that.
But, 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 pardon.
So that's the, that's where we're at. That's what the board agreed on. We don't need to go back, or have a desire, you sure that you like us to. We're not in that camp. Where do we get that?
Okay.
No, I'm asking, we're not in that camp.
I, I, I mean, I just come back to, you know, when we, when we throw out the word critical race theory, the key words in critical race theory are are diversity, equity, and inclusion. They're, they're the buzzwords for that whole thing. And if you, if you, if you go back to the, the, the teacher, at, at John Hopkins, was a German philosopher named Hegel. And his goal was to separate the children from the parents.
Oh, none of us are doing any of that.
And to even imply that we are is highly insulting. Okay, I have read articles about myself that, whatever, we can get to that at a different time. Saying that, you know, essentially we, as a board, are, have, we're implementing critical race theory, and all of these things that is a hundred percent not true. And it's a political viewpoint, which is fine, but I really, I mean, I personally try to keep politics out. And we are not teaching the critical race theory in school. So to even suggest that we are is really, really problematic. Because that sets a false tone. And it's a buzzword right now, critical race theory, it's, you know, on every news station, and you could, and then people get in a, like, you know, I don't know, you know, they freak out or whatever, call the district, probably fielding calls over something that simply is not true. And the background behind it is these words. These are, three words are the same. That does not mean that we're teaching critical race theory. Which is a college course.
See, that was the, that was how emphasized that was last night, I was glad to hear that. You know what, I'm going to assume that maybe colleges have changed it then, obviously, since I was there. But that is a college, so I think that our director made it very clear, that is not set, that is not our, our program. Uh, I'm kinda wondering if maybe I, I remember the original, our original statement is what is a surprise, and do we need to come up with a statement as to when a surprise? When's the deadline for a surprise? When's deadline? Because I think we have clarified, we've kind of, I think we've had a good, a conversation.
I was gonna go on to say that, to, uh, that surprises, if you ever concerned, go to the board person, superintendent, and tell them, and so it's in.
Yeah. Okay, well, just keep going. Okay. So.
Just a quick brief round, what we're doing tonight is about being a great team, not about trying to further define critical race theory. We're not being, did we hear that? It's about being a great team, and understanding that function, understanding that, understanding that's where one of our board directors is at, that's okay. We wanna take that into consideration. This voice is important, each one of our voices is important, but together, it's gonna come up, what will we do collectively on behalf of that, Steve? That's what we're.
Okay, so can, can, I didn't read the first bullet? I did read the first bullet?
Well, I kinda did.
Okay, you guys, you didn't. So, obviously, quickly, conduct at a board meeting is very important. Team members have agreed to avoid words and actions that create a negative impression on an individual, the board, or the district. While we encourage debate and differing points of view, we will do it with care and respect to avoid an escalation of negative impressions or incidents.
I think we already.
We did, we talked about this, okay. The board will emphasize planning, policymaking, and public relations, and not become involved in implementing policy.
Which really is procedures.
Yes.
And I don't know if we need to even spell that out, it is procedures, that's not our job, sometimes I'm the first to say I, I'm a control freak, I don't, I reckon. We all are A-type personalities, trying to get things done, wanting to know how it's gonna happen. I know, I know.
Personality.
Well, anyway, those procedures are really hard, and I, I'm the person that I want to know the process, I wanna know how it's gonna happen, what's it gonna happen in. Those are procedures, and I've had to learn, that's not my job. And I really hate that phrase, because I don't wanna shirk any word. But procedures are not what this board is, is about.
But we do get to, but we do get to measure the impact of a policy.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's where we do get to be type A. So we have expectations that the policy moves the direction forward. And so superintendent, if you have the right procedures in place, then we do that happen, that's the countermeasure plan. And with how beautiful it was, that's what we did last night in our board evaluation, right, in the superintendent's, I mean, superintendent evaluation. This is how I'm operating in these areas. We measure it, if you don't feel good about it, we give you feedback, if you make adjustments.
The superintendent is the chief executive officer and should recommend, propose, and or suggest additional information or opinions on those matters before the board. The authority of the board resides in the collective decision of the individual board directors, and is presented publicly as one voice. Individual board directors do not have authority. Only when speaking as one voice and acting as a whole, does the board have authority. We agree that an individual board director will not take unilateral action. The board president will communicate the positions, or positions of the board on controversial issues after discussions with all board directors. When board directors serve on various school committees, their role shall be defined by the board as silent observer or active participant. As a member of various school committees and state committees, the board directors will share the information with us.
I think we've, I think we've done a good job of these, we do our school assignments, we say, here's our look for, this is how we wanna communicate. We take our three bullets, our messages, and use those opportunities to share back to the community. I feel like the heart of this has been something that we, as a board, have, has, you know, we've done this well. That's my thoughts and compliments for that.
I, I'm gonna say, I think the one voice is so clarifying as to, you know, where we stand. And I know that there's been times I've wanted to do something, and I didn't get maybe I only had my vote. So the one vice, the one voice to me is cool. And I'm gonna suggest that might even be a great topic for us to present by the WADA or SBA, because it is so defining and clarifying what we as a board make our position statement, and I think it is, I think it clarifies things. It, it's, it's, to me, I don't know how many districts have this or don't have it. This, I think it's one of the best things that we've come up with.
Well, speaking with one voice is after the vote, not the board.
Yeah, but we have, just to clarify, there have been times that it has not gone one voice this year, even after a vote, so but that is true, it is after a vote, but I hear that hasn't always.
And, and Melissa, I know that you, remember when you got on the board, and it was, you say, when I disagree with that? Yeah, but this is our vote, and this is our voice now, and it is a really learned thing, and you're right, Paul. It is after the vote, and we do, we are entitled to our opinions. But we, we know something's gonna go very contrary to an outcome, I'm not so sure that's in our best interest. And it stays out there.
I'm more concerned, not just um yeah, possibly speaking contrary to the one voice, because I think that has happened in this last year as well. But what I'm concerned is this, is, remember, this is, this is a culture, this isn't rules. These are help, help you build the culture. The culture should be I did not, I shared my voice, everybody heard. And that's where I think sometimes we struggle, it's like, maybe I feel like I haven't been heard, or I say, I, you said the first vote. That one of us hasn't been heard. If we don't feel we've been heard, then we really do get to raise our hand and say I don't feel like I've been heard. Then we look at it, at some point, we say, yeah, well, we've had several meetings, and we have. Then it may be, I didn't get my light, I don't know how all those dynamics, but we make sure that you hear me, that we really do wanna hear each voice, and that the second voice can be, that can be the goal. And the second voice can be the very thing that we need to hear, right? But then, once we do the vote, then we all collectively move forward. And so I struggle with the request that you made for this upcoming board meeting. Uh, not just because it was at the last minute on a Monday, but this is what I heard it say to me. Yeah, I don't want us to move forward with equity, equity, because we may be able to change the elections, and I can then get a different outcome. That's what I am. And so it's almost like, because you didn't get your way, maybe I can get two different board members here on the board to get my light. That's how it comes across, that's the impact of it. And so, okay, I'll go ahead and I'll do one voice, but as soon as I get other people to vote with me, or then we be campaigning to get our way, that, that's also not fulfilling one voice. One voice is, no. I shared it, I didn't get it. But they're all on board, so I'm making this in one. And if it crashes and burns, it won't be because I didn't support it, it won't be because I created a faction to make it fit in. It's that, that's the heart of what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Can I ask something? And, and just are we all really in agreeance with that? When, 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 are we all in agree with that? I think it's kind of important to put out there, Paul, I'm not a hundred percent sure that you feel like that's a fair thing. I don't know. And, and I'm not asking that specifically, because it's just, it's just the flipping of you asking me. But I just, do we all really believe in that? I think it's really important that if we can take that away, and what it is in our heart, and it is what we know what's right, then it's good. I, I just, I'm concerned about that.
I, I do.
And I would just clarify, I did, we made a change to operating, uh, procedures when we, as Carol, you and I were on it. And my, when I first came on the board, it was more in the section in the, uh, procedures that said essentially at all times, you said, this is my position. My thing was, say, this is the board's position. But, you know, you, you can still say, you know, you're, you have a personal belief or your own compass of what way you go. So it was more like, this is what we're doing as a board, it's really believe that. But, you know, if someone or anyone knows who you are, they probably know, you know, the vote is on record, so, right, like, they know that you don't agree with that necessarily, but uh, so that's what I gained. But I mean, I, I have seen how one voice has not gone well this year in some areas, and it does create a really rocky time. Uh, not only for the board, but I, I do feel like for the superintendent as well, because we're calling in a bunch of different directions, when it should be calling in one direction. Uh, so I, I definitely have seen the importance of one voice this year by seeing it not go that way. So I, I definitely have seen the importance of one voice this year by seeing it not go that way.
Well, what I would love to be able to say is. I didn't get my way, but I was heard. And therefore, I'm going to respect the decision of the board because they really did hear me. And there's going to be times in our community when I don't like to pay some of my taxes, I have, I know almost to the dollar what my taxes are. And I pay those taxes, and other people may not pay the same taxes, and they go to different places, and they may not be as nice, and all these types of things. It's all factored in, and it's different for me than it is for different, than it is for somebody else, but ultimately, we all pay our taxes. And we don't walk around and say, I hate the city of Lakewood or Pierce County. We live here, and so if you live here, pay your, and there's that point, then you did it, but yeah, I've been heard, I don't like it, but. I'm going to be the best Pierce Countyan, Lakewoodonian, whatever we are, the best. School district county in that I can be, because that's what's in the best interest to have a positive culture for my community. His life's already hard enough without trying to change things and make them worse. So it's a hard thing, and I really appreciate what you said of us because you have had things that go your way. I didn't want, there's, last year, there was two or three things that did go my way, and you guys might not even know what they are. And that's okay, and that's what, that's what team does, that's what family does.
I'm looking all about fighting up to the last minute for what you believe in. I, I certainly do, but then at some point, something's got to give, and you have to go forward, otherwise, it's like a broken record, just going back and back and back. It's nothing's going to change the same people around the board who voted for it in the first place, so then it just seems like. We're. In our head against.
Dysfunctional board, and your board now, we're out there trying to change the team, so we do, it's one of those two.
Board directors will avoid grandstanding with the audience during board meetings.
You know, I'm going to be, that was advocate again, what might that look like to especially the people sitting? Who come to our meetings and, and, or in Zoom, what does that look like, does that look like?
When we go to board evaluations. This, the council members tell us, and yeah, and so that was the power of evaluation, with enough, we may have dominated conversations.
And I remember we had a board member, and, and when the president got done, and I think this is just part of the president, you know, making a comment about. An outcome of what we voted on or something like that, this particular board member always had to add something about his opinion or whatever, or. You know, one time, there was a group of people that left, and this particular board member stopped the meeting and thanked these people for being there. What really disrupted the flow of the meeting, and so what does grandstanding mean, does that mean you, you know. Talk first, talk last, talk most, don't talk at all even, not to be heard, maybe you're upset, you don't want to talk at all, so what does grandstanding look like?
Well, why didn't you, Paul and Melissa catch this last time, because we're always worried.
What, say that again.
Yeah, you helped edit these things before, but it's, it's awesome to go over and work for work, because you still see new things, new growth areas.
Well, and I, I, you know, and I kind of said, what does it look like before, because I think it was about the board member who may be looking for more attention. Maybe having their, their voice heard first, most, last, you know, maybe making their opinion a little bit more dominant or predominant. So it's like being considerate of each other, sometimes, you know, Marty, you do a good job of saying, you know what, let's start this way. When we do board reports, sometimes I'm not quite prepared, and it's like, oh, but that's, that's good, that we don't just keep the same routine. And we do it that way, I know, like, we've had, I think part of the grandstanding is, we said, you know, board reports, we've had these conversations. And they should be three, top three items, what are the top three things you did this month, as opposed to, you know, the laundry list of, you know, of, of schools you visited. Just because you had to get them all in at the end of the year, so, anyway, so it's, you know, grandstanding is just being conscious and aware that, you know, you don't have any more. Status, you don't have any more opinion, and your words don't weigh more than other people's words.
Right, it, it does say with the audience, so I don't know about grandstanding with the audience, so I don't know if we want to change it to grandstanding in general. You know, because you make a lot of good points, but, and I agree, but this specific bullet point says with the audience, so what would that look like, I guess?
That I don't think has ever come up before, and I, I think, you know, going back to the conversations that we have, I don't think anybody's grandstanding. We're having open conversations, if an audience was here, and if I was continually wanting my opinion to be heard, and I said. What I felt about each item first and last, and, and wouldn't let somebody else have the floor, that would certainly be grandstanding because of an audience being here, so that's a good point, that is a good point, though.
I think the harder the matter, and I'm a level of conversation, that we want to dominate because every voice counts. You know, that's part, that's certainly part of what I agree, I said.
Yes, yes, we really yell it out.
Yeah, Anthony speaks way too much, I don't know.
One of the example of grandstanding.
We're not one to just be like you, you know. Each board director agrees to speak to the issues on the agenda at the board meetings with fellow board directors. Facts and information needed from the administration will be referred to the superintendent for immediate response or comment whenever possible. Follow-up to the public questions and comments will be forwarded to the board and addressed during the superintendent's comments portion of the agenda as appropriate. Exec meetings, executive sessions, and special meetings will be held only when specifically legally, oh, sorry, I must have missed the word there. Will be held only when specifically legally allowable needs arise. Board directors will treat information discussed in these meetings as confidential in accordance with the state law and the open public meeting. Board director requests, which may require considerable time or have political implications, are to be directed to the superintendent and board president.
Should, should, after a consensus of a voice of one is reached? Because it says here, a board director requests, which I can tell superintendent, go do something, but according to this, it looks like you can do that without the voice of one, do we need to have a voice of one?
Voice of three.
Voice of, no, voice of one, well, yeah, yes, 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 yes.
Do we need a voice of three?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, does it need to be there, which I personally think that it does.
Yeah, the point, and this is what we do when. We're at a board workshop. And somebody says, I want this information. And if it's going to cause a lot of effort, you know, or if it's a politically hot button, then I'll say, that's what I do, process source down, I'll say, I, can you weigh in? And I'll just ask for thumbs up, just to make sure that there's at least three of us, or sometimes somebody else say, I want this to be on the agenda. And you have a right, every board director has a right to say, I want this on the agenda, but we need to make sure that the rest of us want two, so there's at least a voice of three. So that's how I would function with this particular statement. And I think you can use some clarity of view.
Do you think it needs clarity? Well.
You know.
I do personally, because of this, if, if, you know, how many years from now, someone's, we're not sitting here. You know, if, if I go tell our HR person how I think negotiations ought to be handled. And I'm the only one that wants that, well, according to this, board director, so I, I think we need to clarify.
No, it's not what it says, so you talk to the superintendent or the board president, you don't get to do that, you don't get to talk to anybody else.
Okay, if I say to the superintendent, yeah, you're right, Paul, you're absolutely right, so if I say to the superintendent, I want to find out negotiations, da-da-da. Without him, without me knowing, I've got two other board members wanting that information, can't we go there?
So Ron, who is very much aware of this, is acknowledging that there's that definite article or, you know, conjunction between these two where it's superintendent and board president. And so none of us get to go and tell him to do anything, and so I was doing it in the workshop, because that's where we normally would do that. You, you don't do it, you just say.
Yeah.
That's not even an option, so the truth is, is that if you wanted to do something different, that's when you kind of contact the board president. And then they give you the credit out of the email, and say, you know, we just want the rest of us wanting to cause the superintendent to be more on that list. So that's how that works, but you're right, nobody gets to do it. So.
No silos.
And he's, and if he, or if it's Debbie or she, whoever that person is, if that happens, they've always been very good to come to you, or whoever the board president is, and say. Uh, you know, Ralph wanted us to do this, you just need to know that, and then it comes back, and so then we can process it. But ideally, if any of us, if you guys do this all the time, as you'll say, I'm, I'm thinking about this, and they'll contact me, and you'll think back, and that. You know, questions up to those board directors, is this something that you, that we want to put more effort into? Especially as it comes to setting the agendas for our retreats.
Yeah, I think it's important, bullet point doesn't mean you will get, it doesn't say you will get the answers, because by asking the question.
Just posing the question.
No, I, I see where you're at.
And this is why we have to leave everything.
Okay, all personnel complaints and criticisms received by the board or its individual members will be directed to the superintendent. With responsibility, it is to oversee the operations of this whole district, the superintendent will give board, the board feedback regarding the resume. The last stop, not the first, will be the board, board directors have agreed to follow the chain of command and insist that others do likewise. While the board is eager to listen to its constituents and staff, each inquiry is to be referred to the person who can properly and.
Where does the voter go on this one?
So if it's by the issue, so everybody's a potential voter, or maybe it's not even a voter, maybe. Remember, our constituents are, are our constituents at the heart, it's this person right here, and so we also have people who like this. There may have people who did not, but if they have a concern, they say. They're not. Giving the book that my child needs to do their math homework. I say, oh, really, what's, what school is that, have you gone to the teacher? Because that's the first level of contact, have you gone to the teacher, why not? Well, you know what, and maybe that the teacher dated the child, the girl, the child lost it through the bushes and just tells you, maybe that book it does. But go to the teacher, so it doesn't matter, go there, remember, they go to the first contact, the chain of command, just like you were.
But if you're, if you're just a voter and you don't have a child, child in the district, what would you do?
So now, if I, if I'm a voter or not, and I don't have a child in a school, and I'm concerned about. Because we've heard this, having the lights too bright, and I live next to the high school, have you gone to the principal of that high school and talked to them about that? That, that will be your first stop, and so then maybe go to that principal, if that didn't work, that's okay, you might want to go to the facilities directly. And if that, if they don't respond, then you can go all the way up to meet the superintendent, if the superintendent did not respond to your, your questions, then have a right to vote to me. And then I'll make sure that I go to the board president, if that's okay, and we do that. That's the process, so you don't have to have a child in the school, you live out the back of school.
I, I think, Ron, this may happen, as a citizen who doesn't have a child in the district, and they have a concern, oftentimes, they will call the superintendent because that's the face of the district. But isn't it true that the superintendent then will direct them to the council member or the staff member, is that how that trickles down?
Yes, we definitely try to get the issue resolved at the lowest possible level, and. I would love to say as the superintendent, I know every single thing that happens every single moment of the day, but that's why I hire a great team. Who have expertise, who may be better suited to respond to the question, it's not about avoiding the question or avoiding the. Conflict, hopefully constructive conflict, it's about making sure that the issue is resolved, the information is. And, and even though we give the information, doesn't mean that they agree necessarily, but we want to make sure that they get accurate information. So sometimes I might be making that response, sometimes, you know, if it's a very angry person, I might say, I will get that information, so I'm not subjecting, subjecting. That person to sideways energy and getting them off track of the work they're doing, so I may gather that, but yeah, yes, short answer to your question.
Well, I think it's a very common misnomer that if citizens, I'm going to call superintendent, I'm going to call board members, and I'm going to let them know how I feel. Okay, that's one thing, if they ask for action, then, so I just think that's kind of a common path, I know that you do handle that, sending it down or sending it across to the person, so.
And I, just coming from a different perspective as well, I do think that it's just so important to be hired. These people, they're very intelligent, great at what they do, and I think in my own job, when like I can resolve the issue perfectly fine. But then they're like, you know what, I think I'll call the CEO of the company, I'm like, well, what on earth did you do that for, when I, when I can resolve it, and it really does, what kind of a bad. Five out there, I guess you could say, because, you know, if you can resolve it at a lower level, that's ideal to not.
Maybe not even a word, lower level, but.
Sorry, yeah.
But no, but it's, it's the, it's the level of action, level of responsibility, it's the right level. But if the right level doesn't get the right response, then you do.
Yeah, you could do something, yeah, so.
I just don't want anybody to feel like.
Yeah, sorry, that wasn't what I was saying, I was just thinking, I was thinking of stares.
And I think there's a point where, you know, that's, I'm just. I, I really appreciate your comment, because we do pay people to do certain things, and if we're. Believe in that, build the right structure, then we have trust, if it doesn't, then we have recourse, there's two.
And even, it's not necessarily the right response, because a lot of times, people may not hear the response that they want. And then they will ask at a different quote-unquote level, and, and that's okay, so sometimes I may be reaffirming the response that was given. And sometimes I might say, you know what, I, I think there's something there, let me dig deeper, right, because we're not perfect. But, but uh, it is about that chain, so that we are building an expectation and honoring folks at the different positions that we hire for. As well as honoring getting the right information.
Well, yeah, and like, I sort of really don't have all the answers, I mean.
Well, the good news is, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to have the presentation answers, though we can send them to the right.
That's why there's a process and procedure, because we're, everybody's speaking on one voice.
All right. The board will encourage others to present their own issues, problems, and/or proposals.
Yeah, I see, I really see the significance of that, because if I'm presenting somebody else's viewpoints, it's already skewed. It has to go through the layer of how I feel about it. And, and so what we do as a board is we give people access to share their own viewpoints, right? And so that's why we have a couple of comments, that's why it's our board meeting to allow people to address house specific. So that it doesn't go sideways or take out nervous and side energy, I, I get that, that's a good comment, but I think that's the heart of that.
The board will address its behavior through annual self-evaluation and by addressing itself to any individual problems such as poor meeting attendance, tardiness, or leaks of confidence.
Well, again, and I, I did great with the copies, because I am proud of the fact that we do board self-evaluations, and also proud of the fact that we do that. Before we do superintendent evaluations, so that we feel where it's high to be evaluated, puts us in that place, oh, yeah. We've got to be teachable, we've got to be coachable, none of us are perfect, but we want to make sure that we move the right bits forward, I'm proud of us.
You know what, I'm proud that district, that we moved forward and asked for evaluation by professionals to. to give us that candid, anonymous look to ourselves. And I've asked for it for years and years and years. And I really appreciate that. And to me, that's, you know, when we did board evaluation without that, we all had our rose colored glasses on. We all thought we were doing well. And I think it's more valid, it's accurate. And I really appreciate your staff being willing to do it, because I know there was a lot of angst in that. Um, I really appreciate that doing that.
Board priorities. Board priorities will be included and or incorporated into the superintendent's accountable.
That, that's kind of like that statement on our principles of being concerned for each job. It's such a simple statement, but it's everything. If you don't have an accountability plan, then everybody's just doing what everybody does. And so I'm so, again, thankful for our repertory that we have plans and measurements that are tied to the work of the district. And Paul, I've, I've appreciated that you've come back and said, and I can see some of those in my classroom. That's when we've really done it well. And so that's a huge thing.
Each member of the team is charged with the responsibility of working as a team to find the best way to meet the needs of our students and schools. Our approach is to work in an open, positive, and problem-solving atmosphere to achieve the goals of the district. Loyalty and disagreement. Cooperation, support, and loyalty do not mean we will agree on every issue. Dialogue, divergent thinking, and debate will encourage the best decision, decisions. To clarify this principle, the following rules must be adhered to. Each individual has the responsibility to remain loyal to the district, to each member of the team, and to our common cause and quality education for each child.
So I, and I feel that, Paul, recruiting people to run a guest is understandable, but it doesn't feel loyal. And I've had many meetings with you over ten years of wanting to grow in loyalty and grow in understanding. But I don't want it to seem empty quiet tonight and say that this doesn't bother me, because it does, and I want to be honest. And it doesn't mean that I'm right. I'm just saying that that was disappointing to me because I've sought to be loyal to you. I've dealt with you. I've had hard conversations, even in the last election. Be there, I was willing to try to help and those types of things. And so I still acknowledge that you have every right, you know, to watch somebody else run, but it doesn't feel. But that's all.
You know, obviously, the same candidate party. It is definitely, you're right. But you know, I think it, you know, you just had an election. I definitely didn't make my voice vocal to the world. I kind of just tried to make it so we're still a good team. You know, I have my personal opinions. I could express that to my friends, but kind of an active campaign and comments at board meetings to essentially tell us our opinion. It doesn't matter. Definitely doesn't feel. Anyway.
Yeah, I've always struggled when, you know, a lot of boards, you don't wanna say anything. And the reality is, you know, the rest, the rest of the board lives with who is elected. And if we have to say, I think it's, I have a really hard time not saying. And and I, when I speak, I speak more of what knowledge and information and experiences I have with somebody as opposed to the negative side of why not somebody else? And I think I, I have a really hard time not, and it doesn't say we have to, not taking a position for someone. Um, because I have to work with them. And do I have a belief in them? Do I feel like they're doing things for the right reason? And, and so I, I will state what I, what my beliefs, my beliefs are.
Yeah, I think that when it comes to the actualization of the team, we have to at least be aware that trust is hard to earn and quick to lose. And so if I shouldn't win my election, or you shouldn't win your election, you come back in, there's gonna be, we're still gonna have to back up and find out why you didn't trust us enough to be able to. You know, so at some point, you need to just be aware that when it comes to elections, there may be value in knowing that you may be needing to work with that person.
Yeah, I guess the, the comment at the, was the word being was, is that because of the thing we're not supposed to mention tonight, incumbents will not fare well. Cause that's the.
Okay, what thing I'm not supposed to mention?
CRT.
So that's why, and that's, I mean, I guess about what I have a lot of time with you. You're having, you know, whatever, actively even people to, you know, try to get on the board and just you're right in line, just to be clear. But you're putting it in the board meetings as Mari and I believe something that we don't believe. Like that is not what we are doing, what we believe, our personal viewpoints. So I think that that's the really hard part, is that you're putting words into our mouths that are.
Where have I put words?
Critical race theory. The critical race theory, essentially saying if we support the equity, um, policy, we believe in critical race theory. That is what you're saying. And that's putting words in front of us than something that is 100% not true for me. And so that's what I have a hard time with, is the information that's being, so, you know, a surprise note in a board meeting is something that is essentially a personal attack. And putting words into my mouth. And it's like, and then, you know, it's hard to always respond in a public meeting because you're caught off guard. You don't want your words to be twisted and then put into the local news. And then, so you're trying to be respectful, because you are my team member. So I try to be respectful, you know? And at times that is not reciprocated. I mean, you could talk me out of me time and time again. And I try to just remain respectful and positive as this says, but I mean, at some point, something's gotta give to be a good team.
Nobody said, so again, especially at the conference, nobody said we can't talk about CRT. What we said is that this district is not teaching CRT. That's what we did say. And so, but sometimes.
Is CRT, I'm gonna ask something. And I just, CRT, to me, CRT has seen as a, it's a little political divider. We are nonpartisan elected people. And I think if I was successfully, nobody should really know what politics are, because I'm nonpartisan. I serve every, everybody, all families, all everybody. If we're truly nonpartisan, we need, one of the, one of the WADA documents, I know I've talked to, uh, Kessup, you leave your politics the door, and that includes this very top, you know, top misunderstood conversation, because we don't do that. Word out there is that we do, and that's gotta be generated from somewhere. So, I think we need to keep in mind, we are not partisan. That's just the way it is. And I appreciate and hope that it always stays that way.
Well, and it is important, it is not our job for the students and of Golden Bark and the children like what to have the same political and religious beliefs. And like, that's not why I'm on the board, to push my personal feelings and thoughts onto people. How I parent, how I wanna raise my children is absolutely not how someone else needs to raise their children. Um, and you know, I, that's just a right you have as a parent. Is to put those, those things onto your own children is not the district's responsibility.
It's hard to be a good team, isn't it? It's really hard to be a great team, because you have to have hard conversations. And then if every one of us at this table, this is what's crazy. And so the truth, I didn't matter that I would put out about SOPs. Is that to be a great team, you have to have hard conversations. And each one of us has to be teachable, correctable. And if one person isn't, it has a multiplying impact on the whole team. It's not like, it's certain things where in basketball, if you have a player that's a little bit short, you're, you're okay, because they can easily punch you. You can, and this is when you say certain things, those words don't fall in difference. They go out. It impacts what we do and what we're saying. And so it really is imperative that we know how to come together and honor one voice.
And you know, loyalty, I definitely doesn't mean blind loyalty. And I think that that is important. Like if you feel that someone, anyone on the board has maybe a concerning viewpoint, or like you don't understand where they're coming from, I'm not just like sit down and talk to them, not like one-on-one outside and we'll try to get their viewpoint and see where their heart is before maybe suggesting something else and then having to defend themselves against maybe a false narrative in a public meeting. It's like, you don't get someone 100%, you know, truth usually in a meeting, right? You say you're a comment here and there. You don't get their whole belief system from, from a board meeting.
But you don't want false narrative.
If there is any doubt about contacting employees of the district, the superintendent should be contacted first. Questions about operation, direction, et cetera, should be directed to the superintendent. Information given in confidence, particularly when planning and exploring alternatives, must also remain confidential. Team members should state in advance whatever they consider to be confidential information. When board directors or the superintendent find themselves in disagreement with another team member, a one-to-one meeting with that person should be arranged to confront the disagreement and seek a solution. When the session ends, the disagreement must remain a private matter.
Should the other board members know? I mean, should they know that something's amiss and, but it's resolved, or is it process of resolution or ready to pass? I mean, does that affect the team?
Probably if you resolve it, it affects us very positively.
Right.
We had a disagreement, we figured it out, we're together, we don't see eye to eye, you know, we're not creating that, whatever, that doesn't sound right. We're not creating negative impacts. So, but, and I think that if you haven't resolved it, then I think that, you know, you go to another person and you say, I'm trying to resolve this. No, but the, the goal was resolution and getting that to team, not division or. Depending on the outcome.
Well, if you think another thing in here, because it says, you know, one-to-one meeting, which obviously makes sense, that's usually how you wanna do it. But I do think that there are times when maybe you want a neutral party in there. So that's just a thought too. This is one-to-one, but maybe one of the board members may prefer a, a neutral party if, if for some reason the disagreement maybe be, is so out of hand. I hope that's not the case.
That's a great suggestion.
But it's like a mediator, you know?
Yeah.
A mediator. I don't know. My, my number is, but anyway, I mutually agree on individuals. I don't know. Sometimes a voice of reason when someone's over here and someone's over there, yeah, then that's the whole point of mediator, I guess.
Anger could definitely change your influence of opinion, unfortunately, and lead you in the wrong direction, in some cases.
Escalate to worse. Discussions and disagreements at meetings and debate over issues should be open and honest. Once a final decision is reached, a one voice consensus is established. Each member has a responsibility to support the decision.
I don't have to like this. I just get to support it. That happens.
And that's really hard to do, because it's really hard to say, well, here's what the board voted on, but I disagree. It's really hard. And that's a hard one to do, because I know, I think we've all been in that situation where it's like, yeah, that's, that's what we agreed on.
Well, I, what I actually.
Consensus, that's one to be, you know, so it doesn't absolutely have to be a, a vote of the board or an action. It does indicate consensus as well.
What I have seen over the years is it didn't go my way this year, but I'll try to get it right. You know, she, and so there's, we're not really supporting it. We're supporting it reluctantly until we can change the outcome and get it to go our way. Sometimes that happens.
Robert, the board allows us to do that. And then I, I think the thing in here that I would like to emphasize is meetings and debate over issues should be open and honest. And that's kind of what I was getting at, Carol, when, uh, when I was asking you, what are your definition? What do you think? You know, so that's when we have those kind of conversations, then it's easy, easier. Oh, I see what you're saying. Right? I don't think we've done that as well. That, that's my opinion, but you guys don't agree with that.
No, no, Paul, I appreciate what you're saying. And you make me think, you make me think, sit back and say, what does this look like? What's this affect with me? But to be asked, I, you know what? And this is my first thing. I hate being grilled and thrilled. And if I feel like I'm being grilled and thrilled about what I know, for the advantage of somebody else to prove me wrong, or try to persuade me to another way of thinking, I've always, that's, that's not just a school board thing. I've always had problems with that. If you wanna talk to me and have a conversation, we can do that. If I feel grilled and thrilled, I'm done. I just, you're not, people aren't entitled into that space. If you're a school board member, I don't have, none of us have to respond that way. So maybe, maybe it's in the, the verbiage of how we present it. Maybe it's, if someone's asking me, what is this? That's not a conversation. That's a direct, that's a direct request of what I know. Which, you know, sometimes in my family, we talk about, you don't need to be in the space of what I know. It's still your family. We can still agree, or we can disagree, but I'm entitled to my opinion.
And it's also fair to say that you are a big person. And you've shared that you believe about equity. We all should, again, even this very night. And so we don't feel like we have to say it again in a way that is going to further the debate. Sometimes we don't say it again, because we know it's not gonna do any good. And the voices have been made and we're moving on. But please don't say that it hasn't been open, or don't imply that it hasn't been honest. Especially when it feels like what we're saying may be used against us, which doesn't feel very open at all. And yet, oh, here I am just being open and honest. And I'm really stalling the work that everybody else has already talked about. Nobody here at this table, and please, Rachel, if you don't feel like you've had the right to share what you believe about equity, or if you don't feel like you're on a great journey doing something right, I beg you to stick up now. Because we have, but we still come back to it. You feel like we haven't done it. It has been open. Pardon me, you've been open. It has been honest. Nobody here has lied about how they feel about this. And if you're being dishonest, break out of it.
And I think that that's important. Open and honest might look open, I guess, honesty is honesty, but open might look different from one person to another. Me telling Anthony, tell me this, tell me what you want right this second. That's not gonna get anywhere. And that doesn't mean he's not being open. And sometimes we're like, whoa, like what are you coming at me for? And you know, I guess your question's not when you ask us all, you know, what is your definition of equity? And then my response was, well, I'm not, I'm not at the dictionary. I, we have a definition of equity and that, yes, it's a policy, but I agree with it. And that is what I go off of. That doesn't mean that I'm not open. That doesn't mean that I'm not honest. but I agree with it, and that is what I go off of. That doesn't mean that I'm not open, that doesn't mean that I'm not honest. That, that is what I believe. I don't believe I myself need a different definition to satisfy someone else.
And I think that's safe too. I mean, there's too much of, well, this is what it means, and it's really opinionated. And that's a dangerous lane to go down, I mean, because then you're sending, once again, those messages out. And then now they're believing because they look up to you that, yeah, hey, Anthony told me that, and that is exactly what that means. That'd be dangerous.
Doesn't feel very quiet with it.
No.
And I'm high fiving you right now, I think I'll ask, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's be careful about accusations in general, because it may be just our perspective, it may be our personality type. And so can we reframe it in a, I'm wondering, a point that I could ask. It's different than telling, like what you're saying.
Yeah, and you ask, like, I would say you do that, you're like, hey, I'm gonna say Anthony, because he talks less than me. Like, what do you think? That's a lot different than demanding something from someone, which I, I do feel recently demands are being kind of like, it, it comes off that I demand you answer me in this way, where that, that's always gonna put people off. And then, then we, yeah, it'll kind of look a little disjointed.
So anyhow, so you have a statement here, and this SOP should be open and honest. I, I, obviously, we're, we're, from my perspective, from what I'm hearing here, I'm, I'm not seeing that the way you're seeing it.
So it's only open if we answer your specific demand.
No, just tell me what you think.
We, we do tell you what we think, it's just.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Can you not do that to me, please? You do that to me literally every meeting. When you don't, I ask a question, just as you would ask a bazillion questions from all of us. And when you don't like what I have to say, you throw your arms in the air and essentially come to stop talking.
Which doesn't feel open. It, it does not feel open. And you're telling us that you want us to be open. So please, at least, right or wrong, would you please hear us?
Okay.
Now that I understand why you're staring at me right now.
Because you're staring at me.
Thank you. I think this is a really good opportunity, though. I mean, I think we're collaboratively as a team, really trying to come out and, you know, help you in a, in a direction, you know, and communication styles. Uh, perhaps your, your communication style is very direct, and I, I, I would, my opinion, I would see, see it that way. Um, but I, I think in order, and maybe it's worked on other boards, uh, but in this situation right here with, with us, it's, it's not working. So, I mean, your style, you know, your communication has to be flexible. You know, you have to go with it, and, uh, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to work with you here, Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not against you, not trying to belittle or, or do anything like that, or make you feel like you're in the corner. Because you bring a lot to the table, but I think it's that one aspect right there, uh, with communications, uh, would greatly, greatly, uh, help us as a team.
Okay.
Agendas must be open and on the table for meaningful dialogue to occur. Information upon which decisions are made with accompanying alternatives will be given to the board in a timely manner so that appropriate input and analysis can take place prior to the time of the decision. If a member is unable to support an item at the board meeting, the superintendent should be informed in advance.
So, Rod, this is one where I feel like we probably intentionally left you out, and yet I want to acknowledge that you are the secretary of the board in the face of the district. We intentionally left you out because some of this is on us to be able to be great leaders and a great team for you. Our ultimate goal, Ron Banner, and you will see this, live that or not, but our ultimate goal is to completely support you to transform our students. So that they are left to the fullest potential that they can. And so we need to support you to do that, and you are the secretary of the board. And in a sense, that's awkward because the supervisors here, we don't need to bring clarity. And you're the professional educator, educator, and we're not, even though sometimes we think we are. Well, we actually are, we're the liaison back to the community. And what we're really trying to do with all this is that we want our community to be confident that you know what they need, and that we're able to voice back to this why it is that you're setting these teams up to do the best version of themselves to achieve full potential. That's a great working board. And so sometimes we have to go through this. I, I hope you don't feel left out. This is our stuff to be able to support you in your search. And, uh, when we get to this one, and there's, there's been two other places before where it talks about our interactions with you. We're not trying to say, hey, Ron, how, how are our interactions with you then? Yeah. We're just trying to get through how it is, before we even have those impact, I mean. So I hope you don't feel excited and appreciative, but if there is a point where you want to say, it would help me if, I think this probably would love to hear that. I'm looking for your thoughts. Supervisors, I think, would help me if, uh, secretary of the board. If you see anything that doesn't make sense, and he says something, we want to hear that.
Can I say one thing? Um, my notes that I wrote on here are just, this is the opinion, it sounds to me of like, how surprises. Especially that last statement. This is, this is kind of, to me, this is no surprises, this is grandstanding, this is, this is loyal, this is, you know, team working together. Um, I think it's a pretty impactful statement. I know that we all know, um, of people who bring agendas, and they won't drop their agenda until, you know, they just, personal agendas, really, once we've made, come to our agenda meetings and say, and we've had our discussions, and we have our vote, personal agendas are kind of per se. And, and I really think this one is really a very powerful statement.
We are accountable to the public for the decisions we make and for the quality of our work. We demonstrate responsibility to our patrons by listening to them and by utilizing effective systems and gathering information and assessment and communicating through our established process.
I think the, the community has to take its pulse upon what we communicate. What we communicate creates the pulse, we're committing the confidence in our district. That's, that's the heart of this.
Our accountability program consists of three important components. The adoption of the superintendent's work plan, a yearly review and goal-setting process, and a monitoring and evaluation system for assessing the achievement of goals.
Carol, to me, this is as important as the one voice. I think these are two things, you gotta make it just right when they be, you gotta do at least those things.
Yeah. Using the superintendent's accountability plan, which incorporates the board's expectations and priorities, we will adopt district goals. The superintendent is accountable to the board for the achievement of the district's progress towards these goals. The board in turn is accountable to the public for the effective implementation and completion with periodic updates as necessary.
You know, I'm just gonna say, I think I, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm looking for. When I'm out or from, into a school, for pocket staff members, when they refer to the superintendent's accountability plan as to why they're doing something in their building, to me, that's really a successful triple down. And I like to hear that when you're out and about this, well, the tenants, we're doing this, and this is a piece of that. I, I appreciate that.
Part of what you'll hear is a building may talk about their annual action plan. A district level person may talk about the district improvement.
Yes.
And what will help me is that if you all know and understand that every aspect of that work has been aligned specifically to the superintendent's accountability plan, which is aligned to the board's goals, objectives, priorities. So any comment or action that you see within that lane, it stacks right back to your priorities as they're outlined in the superintendent.
All the way to the lesson plan.
Say that again.
All the way to the lesson plan. Yep.
You have said several times about schools' action plans, and I don't know who came up with the idea to take away school improvement plans. And I know that school improvement plans used to be like this thick, and they spent, what a positive way to run our schools. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
No, I agree, it was wonderful.
Okay, I hear you.
I just want to say I jokingly raised my hand. It's our team, right?
Well.
It's, it's not wrong there, it's.
All right, professional development. We believe that excellence in education is enhanced in professional development. We are committed to the idea of assisting team members' plans for personal and skill development. Each team member, however, must also take responsibility for self-development.
It's a lot to learn, and, uh, you're on board for a long time, and there's still lots to learn. Thank you, everybody, because, you know, tonight, we also, with NSBA, it was to thank you that you take those concerns into the room and professional development. It's not easy to keep those.
Each of us bring a unique perspective to our roles and responsibilities. Each sees the schools from a different vantage point. It is essential that each individual takes the initiative to communicate problems and/or accentuate successes to the board president and superintendent, who will develop plans towards solving problems and celebrating success.
And I, and again, I, I said you want to be honest. I feel like in this last year, that has been circumvented, that I'm hearing things like, there's an anonymous person in the community that feels this way, and so I'm checking this cause. Or I'm hearing, we made this person out of that. And so I, I don't know, it still has come to, to the superintendent until there's momentum behind it or it's inflammatory. And so I'd rather be able to have those kind of relationships where we can, uh, you know, drink from a fountain and have water together and figure it out versus it's a more heated.
For each member of the team, there are organizations to assist members in carrying out their roles effectively. We expect and agree that board directors and administrators will follow Lascaux's adopted Washington School Board standards established by their professional organization. Effective interpersonal communication requires a healthy communication climate with high levels of trust and respect for individuals and for the mission of providing quality education for all students. To achieve this truth, communication must be open, straightforward, and honest.
Can you say something? Just because we have another whole page, you know, I need to take a break personally. Just saying.
Why don't we, would you like to?
I can step out if you guys keep going.
Should we just finish this section since we read it?
Whatever.
Okay. I, I just want to point out, people are probably really, here is respect. I do think the tone of voice for everyone, I know I'm not, I'm not perfect, you know, I, I react when sometimes I feel like I'm being personally attacked. But like, I do think, even if you don't agree with someone, are so far from what they believe, it costs nothing to be respectful to that individual. Tone of voice really does, can show if you're being respectful or not. And I just think that that's an important reminder, you know, in being open and honest, Paul, I just said this at my last thing, sometimes I feel, you know, that the age gap might be part of the reason where if I say something to you, you might shut me down, or I'm not being, in like, you know, a way that doesn't necessarily feel respectful and like, you trust me as a member of your team. Our team. Now, I guess we're all elected, no one, you, you know, gets to tell other people what to think, how to operate, we're all 100% equals. And, you know, I'm sure that at times people feel, no, I'm right about this, and I'm gonna shout to get my points across or whatever. I just think that's important. And I'm always, always willing to hear your side or any one side.
I did. No, it's not. I turned it on because I put it in the bathroom then. It's cool.
Yeah, I turned it off a minute ago.
I was looking at a list, I'm going, plus just in the fight, I, he went for it.
I'll take it. After my house was 90 degrees yesterday, I'd rather be cold and hot.
Just all making sense, is, you having fun yet?
It is far easier to communicate praise than criticism, however, we must learn to communicate both praise and criticism as well as learn to be praised and criticized. Constructive criticism and self-criticism ruin growth to us and our schools.
But, just, I know that we, when we go to a school and we see something, it's not our place to criticize staff, principals, it's our place to tell him what we saw, and I don't know if that needs to be.
Well, I think that's just part of being corporate, right, you know?
I mean, it should be understood, but.
Yeah, okay, maybe.
Yeah, if we go, if we go back to knowing our lane and their lane, we're okay. But if we accidentally, sometimes when you're on the school site, you wanna get in their way, because
It's hard not to.
It's hard not to, right? Like, you're looking at me right now. We're, we're walking and I'm getting cobwebs in my face, it's like it's hard not to say something, right?
Okay. In order to minimize the perception of favoritism or to avoid conflict in the workplace, the board and superintendent will not develop close personal relationships with administrators. Situations where only some of the board or council are invited to participate is discouraged. Group activities for team building and network speaking to forward the mission of the district are acceptable needs of communication.
You know what's interesting about this, because Carol, you and I know the history.
She was right on.
Yeah, well, she felt that there could be favoritism through friendship, and so it was an area where she was very much on the card. But I would suggest to you that once again, almost every one of our issues comes down to trust. If you trust people, then you can go deeper, you may have some of those friendships. It's when you don't trust or you're exclusive and you leave people out, that you create cliques and problems. I'm curious as to y'all's thoughts on, on this particular thing.
Because it's real.
I feel like I'm a sort of friend with Kathy, we've done one or two things, and I feel like I'm a sort of friend. Girl, I've been wanting to interview you. Paul, I've had meetings, I've prayed with you, I've done other things, I feel like I'm a sort of friend. But I don't think that ever keeps us from disagreeing, you know, we haven't leveraged that to try to get away. In my opinion.
But that's not the same, it's really socializing, it's not like we go, I, I, we both know, you know, the weekly basketball games was what this was really.
Yeah. They should just say, don't do weekly basketball.
I mean, I think, I think playing together is as important as working together, and there needs to be some of that, and I
True, don't go to the bathroom together.
I can just tell you for sure, I do not wanna play basketball, if I do, I wanna be on Ron's team, not against him.
We'll put my son and my son at the, at the basket, see, no, so, right, there is really something positive playing together and breaking bread together and doing that, but it's gotta be fair and equitable that we all are there together or we have the opportunity to do so. Nobody has to play basketball, I can speak really good. Party and I wouldn't invite it.
Any other sport but basketball and I'll be there.
Well, let's, let's go back to the heart, because I think the intent here is important, maybe the mechanics are hard, because we can't play these things. Some of us do social events together, some of us do church together, those types of things could really happen, but it doesn't mean we're forming cliques.
Right, right.
As soon as you form a clique, you have definitely caught across that line, or you're leveraging that clique to get an agenda through.
Right.
That's, I believe that's the part of that.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't give a good perception of this, because I mean, even at the, you know, US government, there's cliques and they're always on the news as a clique, you know, they get a name, and then, you know, I just like, man, I think I'd rather be an individual than a The superintendent and the board president will make deliberate attempts to share information and data with all members.
Can you guys pause, because I, I'm willing to hear your feedback, I, I've tried hard to do this, but
I think you both do a stellar job.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I'm just gonna give you a lot of.
Who knows?
Who knows, Ron, actually, you can make me a edit.
Yep.
Yep.
At an amazing level, and I guess YouTube, Marty, but Ron just really steps it up the
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing I would say here is, uh, we need to be careful texting. And then when somebody responds back, we've already violated a double public meeting. When it's somebody responds to a text.
A hard lesson for me to learn, I want, you know, I keep trying.
Well, I think one of the things, and Alyssa brought that to my attention, and I appreciated that, and so one of the things that I try to do now is just send individuals or two by twos.
So you're talking about a group text?
Yeah, when, also, you know, there's, there's a bunch of out there, and with, the minute once somebody responds back, that's a open public meetings violation.
Like this last week when we talked about, you know, the Monday cancellation, I said, I was waiting for the call, I thought, I'd send that, I mean, the minute I get it, I
Yeah, you just, it, it, it's like, uh,
What happens to her?
When email comes out, sending back, when it's sent to all of us, when you respond to that, you just violate it. You know, it's, it's a hard thing, you just don't respond, or if you have a question, pick up your phone and call the president or superintendent.
Yep.
Or the initiator, like I was saying, you know, uh, because there are times when I need to make sure I get a piece of information to all of you, it's very imperative, and so, again, as the initiator of the text, part of what I will do, is I will start, and you've seen that in the last few days, ever since, actually, we talked about that, you'll see it's two people or it's one person, and I'll do five individ-, you know, I'm just cutting and pasting the message, but, uh, and I'll still slip up and do more, but, uh, but I'll definitely work on that from my end.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I, I think it's unfair to you to not be able to send, you know, shotgun us all. That, that's totally fine, what we just have to be disciplined is don't respond. If, if I need, if I have a question, then I need to start a new text
Right.
and send it back to you.
Yeah, and it is important, I guess. No decisions are ever made in usually school. You know, I don't know, a piece of information.
It might be that the meeting is
You know, come
Dark and Gosh, or something.
Come ten minutes early to get a cookie, I don't know, I'm just saying, like, sometimes it's really not anything. Yeah.
I won't answer the word, don't eat first.
I know, sometimes, it is, it is really hard, because sometimes it's like maybe a really sad piece of information, or and you wanna be like, oh gosh, that's heartbreaking, and then you feel bad not responding, but it is it's important. Okay. And information about events in the schools will be regularly provided, regularly provided to the entire board.
The only thing on this, I would hope, I'm looking for some reference. I always say this, I hope that we always get in that, events prior to their happening as opposed to a recap about what happened.
Great point.
When an individual board director is contacted by staff or community members, each member will utilize the following procedures. Listen to the individual's concerns. Inform the individual if the board has agreed to a process for resolving concerns and conflicts through the appropriate management. Inquire if the individual has discussed the issue with the person immediately responsible, if not, provide directions that they may do so. And inform the superintendent of the contact and the response.
And I trust that we have been doing that, because obviously, if we did A through C, but we don't do D, we'd fail, you know, the district, so those of us, let's make sure that we send to people, but if, especially if it's of a political, volatile nature, let the superintendent know that he's had that contact with that information. And then also, you've always done this very well, and if you are contacted, said somebody, you know, Kathy was speaking with somebody and sent them to me, they came to me, let the board president know that we've come back, and we know that there was a contact made, just like if I get an email or got somebody upset, you guys need to know that we've responded to it, so that that person is not left out, so just dotting our eyes across.
Only the superintendent or his or her designated is to contact the district's lawyer or negotiator. If the board director feels the need to talk to the district council or the negotiator, the district is to contact the superintendent. The board president may directly contact the district's legal counsel in reference to the superintendent's contact. The superintendent or designated is responsible for communicating official district's position to the media. There will also be occasions when the board president communicates the official district's position. All board directors will be informed. If communication is to be sent to all board directors, it will be done by phone, email, or mail.
Isn't that funny, that you guys didn't catch texts, and probably because you were afraid to go ahead and text back to group or something?
We should probably add.
If you're gonna use email, which we have, then text should probably be in there too.
Yeah.
I think text should be in there, and we just need to know the rules. Do not respond.
So we can do comma text and, uh,
Maybe that should be a note. You know, if, if, if the superintendent contacts us with a group or the group, no, maybe a note should be, if the president or superintendent communicates with the board via a group text or email, do not respond.
That's fair, that's fair.
You know, do not respond to the group, do not respond to
Yes, do not respond to the
Do not
It could be cleaned up a little bit, you know, you may even wanna put the you know, the, the regulation on that.
I haven't heard, it's interesting, it didn't say, in specific texts, we'll get back to that, but it's still, it's the exact right point. Whether it's email or whether it's a text, you can't hear every file.
And later, Marty and I can give a lesson on what it's like to have your computer challenged and
That, that wasn't violating, just anybody, or even accusation.
Yeah.
There was concern that
Then, then a decision had been made prior to a meeting, and we literally had to turn all of our
It was all board directors, it wasn't
All board directors, they literally, they went to pick up, like, mine was laptop, so I brought it, and then he literally went through my entire They went to Marty's house and spent a couple hours, they did it to every board member.
I see.
And then they found that, oh, no decisions were made. Because I think about two days before that, we said, and keep in mind, we are not making any decision, keep opinions, but that, that, we set that out, but you know what, it's, when someone, you know someone's looking at your personal stuff because of an accusation changes, it just
Don't do anything wrong in the first place.
Yeah, yeah. Decision making, there is a workable formula for researching problems and reaching decisions, which should be followed before major decisions or recommendations are made. The board will ask the superintendent to follow this process, and it's not real, but it's together, is that okay? Define the problem. Gather the facts, no decision will solve any problem without full understanding of the situation and an analysis of the facts. Involve representatives who are affected by the problem and who will be affected by the decision. The fact finding process is a good way to involve people in gathering data, becoming knowledgeable about the problem, and being committed to the solution. Propose three or four alternative solutions, including at least one solution that does not require additional funding. Each alternative should list the advantages and disadvantages of that particular solution or alternative. We stop, maybe we should stop before, or do you wanna keep going, is everyone okay, keep going or? Once the group has looked closely at the alternatives, it should then make a, it should then make a recommendation. The recommendation should include documentation of the process used to arrive at the proposed recommendation. The board will analyze data once all of the appropriate stakeholders are involved and they have all the facts. This analysis will vary greatly depending upon the particular problem. In some cases, it may be useful to call in people with expertise in specific areas to help analyze the data and prepare suggestions for solutions. The decision-making process does not end with a decision or the plan. Once the decision is made, it must be communicated to those who are affected. The decisions then must be put into operation and responsibility defined. Plans must also include systematic review and evaluation procedures, including dates by which future decisions regarding continuation, modification, or discontinuation must be made.
And I think it's far reaching for us to have embedded that process in the standard operating procedures. Because up to this point, it's been, this is how we interact with each other, but this is, this is kind of the heart. When we're trying to solve issues, when we're trying to create change, let's make sure When we're trying to solve issues, when we're trying to create change, let's make sure that we've gone through these processes because they're vital to the success of that change. And I, I encourage you each, because I, you know, obviously. Had this information for several days now, but compare the equity plan to that and use every element of it. There, and so we went in, we, and we know that we went all the way back to. Two years ago and said, are we where we need to be with equity? What does it mean to understand where could we be? How could, how could we remove barriers and set more students? And we started having those conversations. So there, we found the gap, we defined the problem, the need, then we started saying, how will we begin to move towards that? And I think the thing that was courageous on our part is that we literally said we were going to be on the journey as opposed to we were going to come with a candid approach. And I'm just saying to you, more we took the harder route. And it, it, it doesn't make it always easy for the community to say, well, we wanted, you know, X, Y, Z. When we say, well, we're doing alphabet. We want A, B, C, yeah, but it's really alphabet. And so we've got, we're doing the whole thing here and we're growing. Together as we do, we better understand what that can be versus being limited by saying, here's a prescribed outcome and it's really no different. So see this again in the online school that we did tonight. It's the exact same thing. Should we do. Culver Park School District only or out? Here's the options. Think about that. What is the problem? Is it virtual? In that, is going to SEL, SOFC, all these other dynamics, we're considering them and then we're progressively moving towards. These steps to figure out what is the best holistic solution while taking into all issues into consideration. It is slow works, what I'm trying to say. And so that's why we're a team. That's why we're a board. It's not always going to go fast. It's not always going to go one way. It's going to go team way. And. And sometimes that can be kind of almost boring, you know, it's so slow. It's like, just make it happen. Well, we don't always just get to make it happen.
I could hear your excitement as you go through that. I still don't, I, in my opinion, I don't think we've defined the problem clearly. If it would have been defined clearly in our briefing the other night, when I asked the questions, those answers would have popped right out. I don't think they did. You all may think they did. I still don't think they did. And, and so I don't think in this thing, we've done that. And the other thing is, is we've only been kind of given one solution. You know, I don't think the alternatives are there. I think we need to talk about the alternatives also.
And whatever, in your mind, what are the alternatives?
But let's, let's be careful, because sometimes what happens is we inadvertently deflect what we're trying to do or move away from. So tonight it's about SOPs and it's okay to use an example, you did a great job, we talked to Equity, I'm sure that's what you were saying too. You're also acknowledging that the answer that you got in terms of the way it landed for you was very different than the way we got. We heard that people of color are being at a higher level of rates of. Behavioral problems, that their. That their levels are higher over X amount of year time. So it was very clear right off the bat. We heard it in two or three other areas. Again, we heard it, you know, so we get here at home. It's just that you didn't hear it in a way that made sense to you. It did to us. And so, or the way that you were in agreement with, whatever that is. So for us to come back at it and get said, we didn't do it, here's my problem. I don't like that to now say what I'm saying right now. Because now what I'm saying to this whole community is I'm having to say, well, wait a minute, we did follow this process. So you don't, you don't believe we did for specific reasons that you share. The rest of us believe that we did and that it was a healthy thing. The rest of us believe we followed this process and I mean, suggesting that we did it again tonight with the online schools. This is a high board process, that this is what great boards or great teams do and we're doing it. But then when you said, well, we're not, and it's fair for you to say that, but the reality is now it creates doubt for those who are listening. And for us as a team, and that we have to say, we come back because we're not doing it right. Or we have to come back and say, this individual is just not with us. Either way, it's not, it's not enjoyable. If it was, that we could answer it to where you can get on board with us, that'd be great. But we've tried several times and you're still not on board with us on this. And yet, four to one, Paul, we all think we have, we still don't. So what do, what do you recommend we do with that? Go back to your own plaque, one mission, one team. You would just not do anything? What do we do? Then I don't want to discredit the process or the board.
I, I have personally heard a lot of problems and I think the main one, right, would be. We want, well, we want to ensure that we're providing, you know, equitable education.
Equity is not always about. There's a problem solved, but it's about how do we make sure that we are being more inclusive in the things that we do. Equity is a good thing. It's affirming. It's hearing. It's not just about the disparate data, and there is disparate data. We are on OSPI's radar right now. We just had a meeting two days ago around disciplined data for. I believe it was boys of color and special needs students where we were suspending out of class suspensions at a higher rate. Not this past year. The reason is this is so tardy is because of COVID. So this is data from just prior to that, that things are now catching up, right? But it's not, equity is not about, we're just solving a problem of this came up, we have to solve that problem. This came up, we have to solve that problem. It's about, again, being proactive and creating a culture of inclusion. Where we take a moment to, to, to look at things. Let me give a concrete example. And I'm gonna go to, to Lakeview Elementary when Megan Eakin was the principal there. ELL students were brought out of class in order to go get their ELL services. That system of bringing them out of class was a barrier to their education because as the problem was analyzed. We recognized that they were being taken out of class and de-exposed to the grade level instruction for that class. We also recognized that the time to get them from the classroom to their ELL classroom. If you added all that up, we were losing instructional time. So that system was a barrier. And so what did we do? We changed that system to where we said, okay, instead of taking the kids to the teacher. For this independent ELL type instruction, and I'm being very general, we're going to now take the teacher to the kids. And use the skill set for ELL instruction within the content area of their grade level standard. Thereby not de-exposing them to that work.
And by the way, maybe now people who don't speak that language and those kids get to be around kids who speak a second language and they do their.
The curb cut effect.
Yeah, right, right. First off, I appreciate that response, Ron. I, I, I truly do. Because what we hear, what all our citizens are hearing is what they hear on their little one-eyed monster. It's just give a lot of negative about this whole thing. I don't have a good counter. Now I do. That example you just gave allows me to talk to citizens and say, hey, have you thought about this? Because what I knew when it comes to equity, I, I talk to people all the time and they say, well. Because they get confused between equal and equitable. And I said, well, as a parent, tell me, do you teach your, you treat your children equally or equitable? And they look at me, well, equal. I said, no, you don't. No, you don't. What you do is you treat your children equitably, because if one child's sick, you're going to spend more time with a sick child than you are with somebody else. And if your children comes home and one needs help with math homework, or one needs help with English homework, you don't do both math. You, you do the equitable thing. And so that example is a tremendous example. And to me, those are the things as a board director that I need as I interface with people in our community. And so those are the kind of questions that I need and that's the discussion that I would like to see more of.
So in the spirit of what you just said, let me also apply to something that I heard last night, which was. You know, and it's just hard for me to go back eight and nine years and be able to pull data from, you know, the comment that you made about Beechwood Elementary School. And the, the high cap student or higher level student being, getting less time by the teacher. And part of what you said was, as a matter of fact, you asked the question, so if you've got 60 minutes in three different groups, low, medium, high, how do you give them all? And my response was, maybe it's not the same amount of time, maybe it's a different type of time. And so the, the. What I felt from the question last night was if you are cutting, if you got 60 minutes and you go, and you don't go 20, 20, 20. Then you're cutting this student short. They're losing something because you might have to give more to one of the other groups. But in the spirit of what you just said, that's, that might be equity. Because that student that's operating at a higher level in the given math class or, 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 or a language arts class might not need, right? Just the same concept, might not need that same.
I totally agree with what you're saying. I, I just remember that principal sharing with the data that he had at that point in time. That he and the teacher were just disappointed with the progress that the high, you know, the, the top students did. They, they regress from their perspective. The data showed that they regress and they would, oh man, how do we, how do we do that? So I hear what you're saying. So the question is, is. How do we explain that to parents? Because in their mind, well, they're, they're getting shorter. I mean, if you, if you, if you look at it that way, so we have to have a way to explain it. So that they understand what we're doing, so that they understand equitable, equal and equitable, because they're different.
And yet, and yet, Paul, you have told people in our district, because I want to be open and honest.
I watch out.
You have told people in our district that we are teaching CRT, our people have called and said that you have told them that. And so, yeah, and so you have. And so here you are tonight saying, I want to tell these great stories. I'm asking you to be aware of the things you can put into momentum when you do the other thing. And so last night, I personally used the ELL thing that Ron just circled back around on. And yet you said earlier, you didn't have anything, any answer. And granted you the answer on discipline, I gave it ELL and yet you would still say that there was no answers given. That's the confusing part. So when you say you want to be open and honest, it's hard. Because I don't, either you're not being open or it didn't, something, there's another disconnect. And so I just want us to be 100% fair and not saying, okay, I really am for equity, but I'm also saying that there's. CRT would never have. That doesn't help our cause. It damages it every time.
Well, I, I mean, and so, okay.
And this is SOP. I'm not even talking about equity. I'm talking SOPs right now. We can't give out different information. We can't talk out of both sides of our mouths. We need to tell the truth. And if there's a problem, then we will define it and we'll look at it and we'll meet it openly and honestly. But we won't go out and say things here and say things there and, and create a inflammatory situation that we have, that stalls our work. That, that's, that's my concern.
Well, then, then what, what I need, what I need is answers like Ron just gave. Okay? That's, that was helpful to me.
And what we need is, and what we need as a board is that if you're not giving an answer that you need. We don't need you going out and doing inflammatory things that hurts the district and the team. That's what we're trying to say, yes or no.
Well, I, I, I mean, I gotta see the inflammatory stuff. I, I know, where is the inflammatory stuff?
Okay, so, so I just said it when you, and you were admitting that you did it, you tell people.
Why did I admit it?
All right, you can say that you didn't. Paul, have you ever told anybody in the community that we're teaching CRT?
I, I, I don't know.
Okay, so anyway, so I, I'm really working on being open and honest. That kind of stuff does not promote team when we're moving in a certain direction. If you heard from the superintendent who talked about illustrations on equity being in a cost of being on discipline, they didn't say. Zero evidence is given to me that I, I asked the question and nothing was given and yet it really lasts. That's the, the misinformation or disinformation that creates a dysfunctional communication style. And it, it really disturbs the work of the district for the students and it causes us to be dysfunctional. That's what it does. So, and then another area of the. The minutes thing that went on forever, you literally said in public twice that we had incorrectly or falsely. It seemed like you said falsified minutes and we hadn't. And so we don't feel that we did, you kept saying that.
I mean, that had been put on just for record, so I think that's important.
That's the processes that we're saying need to be taken. And I appreciate the comments on equity tonight. But I want us to stay on procedures to be a great team. And so those are the examples, Paul, and I'm open to hearing ways that we can improve it so that. You know, we, we take all viewpoints into consideration, but at some point we have to move on and go forward. And, I mean, I hadn't become a expert on CRT to make sure that, like, Alyssa said. People aren't putting words in my mouth and you're not putting words in our mouth as a district. I thought, go back and reread all the public meeting act requirements around minutes. We've done nothing wrong. It's right here in the book. And, and we've shared that and yet twice you made the accusation that we have. You even made it to the point where, you know, it just. And so that, that has to be addressed at some level so that we can be on the same page.
Yeah.
And that's just the truth.
Written about it too, with information that all, I mean, you can follow the trail. It's not, it's not a hard trail to follow. And it's like, you know, we voted on something, so it was a final vote and then articles were coming out about how we weren't following the rules for meeting minutes. Which is not true at all. I said, you know, we had a, like a subcommittee about it going through every single thing. Uh, that happened at that meeting versus what was required by law and our policy and absolutely nothing was. Wrong legally or by our policy, yet it still kept coming up. Then all of a sudden, you know. A news article was written about it and it was just never ending.
Well, then we get a blame for not being honest and transparent when we actually were. So that's the hard part for us.
I might be going on to a different topic than I don't think it directly is, and if it is, take care of the other, honestly. When, Paul, both yours, your kids and mine, it's all in gifted programs. And I remember it is, it goes back to the achievement gap thing. So a principal told you that every kid in there, high achieving kids, their stand, their, their grades and their, their progress lower failed. Because that's what I heard you say, is all my high achieving kids fail. Well, that's such an absolute statement that that really. I, I can't imagine. And when we say that, public's going to believe us because we're the board and we know that.
And they're going to like burn it those eight years, they're right.
Well, not even that, but it's like, that's an absolute statement about kids' performance when nothing is ever absolute about kids' performances. Yeah, as Ron said.
I don't want to get off the process piece, but I think, but what I heard was that the teacher. And again, I'm not confirming or denying, I just want to make sure that what I heard is what you guys heard, is that the teacher was upset. Because she failed her high performing kids. Not that she failed them in terms of their grades were fails. But that she didn't feel like she did what she needed to do for them.
See, what I heard is that those kids didn't perform as well because she had to focus on other kids who worked to, to bring them out.
And then that she felt like she failed those higher performing kids.
If it's how a teacher felt, that's one thing. If a teacher said those higher performing kids did not continue to high achieve, then.
Again, when we talk like this, it, it creates speculation and doubt and it, as a. And it, as opposed to saying, we're doing everything we can to create an amazing learning environment and it includes bringing a teacher into the classroom to augment that learning, to work with them. It creates having curriculum that could be for high performing, and then we have RTIs to bring you from here to there. So there's all this right stuff that we're doing, but now that all gets lost in the middle of they did, they disservice to equity. So it, it, it's a pause, and our community only knows what their firsthand experiences and what we communicate. And if there's one thing that I hope that we can do better as a board is follow these procedures and then communicate very effectively from the heart, not, not to check the box, but because we're a group. Have we gotten through them, I think we have?
So, what's next for them?
Well, probably because we have a few things that we wrote down that we wanted to reveal, so. We have the habit measure success, also the clarity of more enterprises, what does grandstanding look like, board director request must be a voice of agree, and then the communication section.
Who, who was on the subcommittee last time?
Carol and I.
So can we divide it up this time and have you and Anthony make a deal, how would y'all feel about having these two?
Oh gosh, so sorry, I know you did a great job.
Thank you, Carol.
You know what, if, if we find it to a time, it's gonna be nothing now. Just saying.
Well, there, at least this time, the things that we've asked you to look at are
Yeah, they're pretty pointed.
And so then we wanna be able, as you know, we wanna grow the science at least by September, beginning of the school year, right? And so if you can plan that from there, report to us what you need after us. Are we all good with that?
Uh huh.
And so I've seen all nods, that makes sense. Thank you for very open, honest discussions. And we all have the opportunity to trust each other more because we're putting our cards on the table, it's not a mistrust, it's, it's a gift of trust. I was unsure, someone's gonna say it because I wanna grow trust, I don't wanna doubt.
It's kind of a new start, it could be a new start also, if, if we keep our feelings and our angst up inside us and we don't share them, there is no growth, there is no start.
So I'm going to acknowledge that we are at 8:34, we really need to break for executive session, we need to break for executive session. And so I'm recommending that we adjourned executive session for others. Legal issues, and that we will be back at 9:00 now. Very high to adjourn the meeting. And then maybe a little bit sooner, but just to be safe, it could be 8:50, 20 minutes, 20 seconds.
Maybe like six minutes.
Yeah, it would be such a first in a moment.
We've returned from executive sessions, we see that, and we're going to move the rest of our items to further discussion at a later workshop. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, the motion was made by Paul Whitman and it was submitted by Anthony LaLanne. In favor, say, say. I urge the motion carried unanimously. We will conclude our meeting tonight at 9:02 PM. Thank you, everybody, for tonight, for those who attended.
Thank you.
Yes.